January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, Gulf County, Gordo County, Bay of Carolina State.
Joining me in prayer, please, Father, thank you again for a beautiful day you bestowed upon us. But we ask that you lead us, guide us, and direct us about this board goes about conducting the great people. What is always, we ask that you look over our military or look over our law enforcement. Like, what's going wrong in this? Lives on the line daily for us and have the same right to come home to their families. But again, this is community, blind people in this county, in this great state of Florida. I extend welcome to each of you for coming out to the January thirteenth regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. Hope everyone had a very merry Christmas and a happy new year, and we're looking forward to getting two thousand and fifteen underway. It will be gone before we know it. If anyone has any issues or any questions or that they would like to come before the board, there will be a time in the board meeting where I'll ask for public, anyone in the public that has anything they want to come before the board with. And at that time, if you'll just be recognized, you will be granted time to be before the board. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open up. Is anyone in the audience has any questions concerning the consent agenda or the information packet to be recognized? Anyone in the audience? Information packet or the consent agenda or the information packet? Or you can pull it up on the website. Anyone in the audience? Anyone with the staff have any questions concerning the consent agenda or the information packet? Or any of the board members? Any of the board members? Alright, he's motioned to accept the consent agenda and information packet.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
That a motion by Commissioner McLemore? Second. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Other discussion, any discussion from the audience? None, motion passed five and oh to accept the consent agenda information packet. Just pause a moment to get some more chairs out. Commissioner? Few chairs here if anyone in the audience. Anyone, okay, alright. We're gonna probably have a pretty lengthy meeting today, so I'm gonna change the format of yesterday's. This time I'm going to drop down to aisle number eight, Sarah Hines with the Gulf County Department of Health. Sarah, are you here? You are, there you go, how's Jack doing? Great, that's good to hear, good to hear. Alright, good morning.
Good morning.
Alright, give your name and all right over here for them.
Sure.
She's already had it, but give it to her anyway, just for the record.
Okay, Sarah Hines, and I work at the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County. I'm the Health Education Program Manager there, and I just wanted to talk about an exciting opportunity that's come up. It's called the Fitness Challenge Two Thousand and Fifteen. It was created by Casey Rhodes and Michelle Perrin last year as a small group of friends, but it later became a community-wide sensation. So what I've provided to you today is our January Florida Department of Health in Gulf County newsletter. And on the front page is the event about the fitness challenge. But I just wanted to give you more information to read as well, so you get the entire newsletter. The fitness challenge this year is a twelve-week weight loss fitness challenge. It started January seventh last week, and it lasts until April first. The cost is fifteen dollars, and the winner of the entire program gets the whole pot. Right now, as it currently stands, we're at eighty participants. That's not, that's twelve hundred dollars, so we're looking good. But we're trying to get the word out, and I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about it here. Results are based on the percentage of weight loss, so it's fair for everyone. And there will be weigh-ins every three weeks to keep everyone motivated. You can work out on your own, or you can coordinate within a group. And you can join at any time during the program period, just know that the weigh-in, the final weigh-in is the same for everyone, which is April first. The weigh-in locations to sign up for the program are at either health department. We wanted to make it as easy as possible for people to sign up, so you can go to the Weewa Health Department location as well as the St. Joe location at any time. And the information below, you can call me at the Port St. Joe site, two-two-seven-one-two-seven-six, extension two-zero-five. Or you can call Jesse Pippin in Weewa, eight-five-zero-two-two-seven-four-one-nine-three. And that was everything. That was it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
This time we're going into our first public hearing of ordinance, leave no trace. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning. Before you all, you have three ordinances and three public hearings today. The first being the leave no trace ordinance. In page two-twenty-four of the consent agenda, it's a copy of the public notice that was advertised. It has been published for January fifth and January nineteenth, consistent with Florida statute one-twenty-five subsection sixty-six. If I can, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll read it by title, and then I can provide you a brief summary or overview of the leave no trace. I know we have some staff that probably could offer some additional comment, and then if you would open it up to your public hearing. The ordinance reads as follows. The ordinance of Gulf County, Florida prohibiting and regulating obstructions and personal property abandoned on public beaches of Gulf County, Florida, and to be commonly referred to as Gulf County Leave No Trace Ordinance, requiring the posting of proper notice and signage at beach access points and in daily, weekly, and monthly rental units in Gulf County, Florida for said policies to amend, be codified, and become part of the Gulf County Land Development Regulations, LDRs, providing for repealer, severability, and modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing and providing for an effective date. Commissioners, you have a copy of the ordinance in front of each of you. I put it in orange at the top, it's the acronym L-N-T. If you will, the first couple pages of your leave no trace ordinance, if you will, as you refer to it, are several whereas clauses. And as we've gone over in the past under your ordinances, it's the public policy and the commission's will that supports your adoption of a local law. There's been considerable discussion and debate, starting in the tourist development council and coming up through the council and in the community over the past two years with regards to a leave no trace ordinance in some shape or fashion for Gulf County. The ordinance in front of you all details, and is a result of the public discussion and the areas of concern from those workshops, from the TDC, and from the comments that you've received at the podium over the last year and a half to two years. It addresses from beach driving to chumming to not leaving abandoned property on the beaches. What is the defined periods of abandoning property to holes dug on the beaches, to camping, to bonfires on the beaches, so on and so forth. It also provides definitions, and it further elaborates on definitions that have been defined in Gulf County in the past with regards to your beaches. There's been discussions with regards to sandy shores. Today is the first of two public hearings before you Commissioners. This is also going before the Planning and Development Review Board on the twenty-sixth of January. That's been properly noticed as well before the planning department. It'll come back to you all per statute for a five-oh-one meeting on the twenty-seventh of January in the evening. And it's been noticed as such, so you'll have your regular meeting on the twenty-seventh of January at nine o'clock. And then later that day, you'll have a special meeting that's been advertised and noticed specifically for these ordinance proposals that you'll hear in the evening to give the community an opportunity to come and hear them as well. I turn it over to, I don't know if Ms. Jenkins has any additional comments on leave no trace. I know we have a couple members from the CCA here, and I believe there's obviously additional public comment, but Ms. Jenkins, I don't know if you have additional comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, in regard to leave no trace, the, much of it has been crafted by reviewing leave no trace ordinances that were adopted by other counties. We had a small committee that has met several times to talk about the issues and have it be all-inclusive. And also, the data that we received from the beach maintenance program this summer and the beach ambassadors program all contributed to the draft ordinance that you have in front of you. And the whole idea was to find a balance, not just pick up as another county does, but craft the ordinance so it's true to us so that we can continue to be a, you know, a destination for visitors, but also make sure that our local quality of life and our environment are protected.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I'm just gonna go through the various sections real quickly, if Ms. Jenkins, and then if you, I can touch on them. I can highlight some of the areas. As there is with any ordinance or any proposed legislation in Gulf County or any of the other sixty-six counties, there's always comment and constructive criticism, so we certainly welcome that during the public hearing today. Just as I mentioned, this has kind of evolved from two years of meetings, as your other ordinances have evolved over several years. So if I can, you'll see on page five is where the definitions begin in the proposed ordinance. And page six is where we begin to talk about what you need to remove. Right now, abandoned property on Gulf County beaches will be left and considered abandoned if not permitted and not tagged properly an hour after sunset, and they'll be permitted to go back out at sunrise the following day. Various communities throughout Florida set defined times, say from nine o'clock at night till six in the morning. What we're trying to do is accommodate the lifestyles and the various culture that we have on the beaches throughout Gulf County, both for the fishermen, for the recreational users, and down to all the visitors that we have come in, in addition to the residents. There's several exceptions to leaving property. Obviously, Gulf County officials are exempt, as is law enforcement and our first responders. They all have an opportunity to be out there and utilize and leave property on the beaches if it's in their official capacity. There's a permit section on page eight, which speaks to the county administrator having the ability to, they receive applications from the community that provide some very basic information, such as the name of the contact, the description of the items, the location of the items, the duration of the time that will be on the beach, and acknowledgement by the owner in possession and control of the item that they're liable for the impacts for endangered species on those beaches. One of the considerations, and I guess the sensitivity of the ordinance, is to be mindful of private property rights, residents of Gulf County, and in addition to the visitors. We've received considerable comment from people that live along the beaches in the Gulf that are concerned about leaving their property out there as well, and I believe you'll hear from some of them. What we're trying to do through the permit and the administration office is to give the county the ability to issue permits to property owners, special events, weddings, there's also commercial businesses, I believe, that rent materials or beach equipment to visitors and residents, and the idea under section five is to provide them that ability. Section six speaks to digging holes on the beach that you cannot leave them overnight. Camping on Gulf County beaches is defined not to be a certain distance from waterfront residences. Glass containers on the beaches are now strictly prohibited. Bonfires is to be a certain distance from any structure along Gulf County beaches. Chumming or fishing, shark fishing, through bloodbaiting will be strictly regulated. And then there is also beach vehicles authorized, which is the Gulf County officials and law enforcement. Section thirteen under page nine is the soliciting and canvassing on the beaches of Gulf County. Section fourteen is noise ordinance or enforcement of noise ordinance and sound amplification. Section fifteen is a breach of the peace. Section sixteen is removal of sand, which is prohibited. And then section seventeen is with regards to our rental and vacation units throughout Gulf County that it should be, I believe through the comments of the TDC, a partnership between the vacation rental companies and rental homes that they also participate in informing the public when they come to Gulf County of what the regulations are. So the administrative office will receive a proposed notice from the TDC that will go in each of these vacation homes so that it is noticed to each of the visitors, not only the residents, of a leave no trace ordinance. And then finally, we've put in section eighteen the ability for the TDC each year to go out through digital and printed literature to advocate and inform the public and visitors of what, you know, the regulations and rules of Gulf County's leave no trace ordinance would imply. Commissioners, I turn it over to you for public comment and any comment from the commission.
Thank you.
This time we're going to go through the people. Anyone in the audience for a public comment on this first reading of this leave no trace ordinance? Is anyone in the audience? Alright, Dr. Hardman, we have one, any others that want to speak on, for the board on this? Alright, no, Dr. Hardman, come on, please.
Good morning, Pat Hardman, one-two-three, Maranalee, President Coastal Community Association. I'm so pleased that y'all are finally considering giving us some help and relief out here on the beaches. We've been working on this with the TDC for two years, and we've been working on it for three or four years, trying to get some of these things addressed. And basically, it's a very comprehensive ordinance and a very good one. We've had spent a lot of time, and we certainly appreciate all the time that the TDC has spent researching, looking at what's going on in other counties. And we feel that we're desperately in need of some relief out on the beaches. We have a different type of clientele coming down there. That's one of our major problems. And where we used to have the family people that were coming here for the environment and protecting the environment and cleaning up after themselves, because there are other counties around us have ordinances that say there's some rules to play when you have to go out on the beaches. We're now getting an influx of some of those folks that don't care about our beaches and don't care about our environment. And we're getting quite a volume. What we've got on any given day during the summer is the entire population of Gulf County would not match the number of people that are on the beach and on the Cape. Anywhere from sixteen to eighteen thousand people a day. Last summer, the state park had to close their gates a couple of times because they extended beyond their capacity. So the TDC is doing a fantastic job of bringing folks down here. We just need some rules for when they're here, and at the same time, try to protect the use of our beaches for our Gulf County residents. Volume is a major problem with things like the beach driving, which many of you have been out there and seen the dangers involved in that. At the same time, we want to curtail all beach driving. But we need people that know how to do it and what to do, and that's for Gulf County residents. We've got to look at things like people we who live on the beaches have some rights, just like you would at your home in terms of thinking about the right of way. If you have somebody coming or tent up in front of your house in the right of way and start living out there and start relieving themselves on your right of way, you would get a little bit upset. And that's what we have to contend with. So as opposed to no camping, let's say don't camp where you're gonna mess up front yard. Okay, so, you know, there's been some concern too about how you're going to enforce this. Bottom line is you don't not have a driving speed limit out here because you don't want to hire a deputy. But we could look at other options too. You know, we've got volunteer fire departments who basically take care of volunteer firemen, are some of our leading citizens. We've got tunnel patrol people. We could have classes and have volunteers to help with enforcement of this. And so there's some options that we need to look at, but we need help. And each one of these issues that have been addressed here, and Jeremy has done just awesome job of trying to maintain a balance. And, you know, each one of these are critical problems that we face every day living in South Gulf County. So we ask you to really consider plastic this leave no trace, give us some relief, help us out. Let's protect our citizens, let's let the guests have good time. We're losing visitors, we're losing people because of the lack of safety and the problems on the beaches during the summer. They're going where there are rules. So let's have, let's have some rules that are logical, reasonable, and will help everybody out. Thank you.
Dr. Hardman. Want to comment on this? This ordinance, I did, and I can't speak for the others, but I asked the attorney to try to draw up something county could live with, residents, a full-time residents could live with, and also our visitors, our guests that come down could live with, and I think we've got this pretty well nailed down. I don't want to step on anyone's feet, but still have to have some rules and regulations, and that's what we were mainly going after. Dr. Hardman, thank you for bringing that point. Anyone else on, Watcher? Sir, if you would, give your name here to this.
I'm Charles Burlingame, seven-zero-nine-nine, West Highway ninety-eight. And I wanted to speak to the, the property lines. I live in Yon subdivision, which is in addition to Beacon Hill. And according to my deed, I have a property line that runs thirty-five feet across and a hundred and ninety-nine point three feet deep down to the mean one, mean high tide line. And your ordinance takes in part of my property. That's one of my problems. The Yon subdivision has its own covenants, and one of them is you can't build anything above ground from ninety-eight to the beach. And is there anything in this ordinance that says you're gonna build walkovers in that area? Okay, there was talk of that, I didn't know if that was gonna happen or not, but anyway, that's my main problem, is taking part of my property according to the rules here. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I can, I just.
Let the modest young man's coming on up, go ahead.
Just, if they come up, if I can offer a comment to help you.
Sure.
Two things with regards to the comments, one was the structures, and there is a reference in the ordinance with regards to property owners that have boardwalks or private access to the beach. Right now, it's currently written that it's a request of the ordinance that the property owner drag their property back, or their beach equipment back to the tow line of the dune adjacent to their boardwalks. So the reference in the ordinance right now is currently written with private property owners along the beaches is the boardwalks that are accessed from their homes that they take the property back to that.
Please to that point.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Victor Ramos, twenty-six-eight-two, Indian Pass Road, Indian Pass. One of the things I didn't hear in the ordinance was as far as bonfires go, is what you're allowed to burn. We've had a huge problem at Indian Pass with fishermen coming in at night burning pallets. And pallets are full of screws and nails. And we've got families running back there with children, and in the morning, I have many of the days that I've had to go down there and clean this mess up. I'm getting tired of it, cleaning other people's, you know, fun times down there on the beach that we have to deal with and seeing these kids. I'm also a firefighter and a first responder, and I sure don't want to go down there having to do that too. So it's exacerbating the situation at Indian Pass because it's getting to be known there's no man's land down there, there's very little enforcement. And I'd sure appreciate in that, as far as bonfires go, maybe, I don't know how you're gonna specify what you're allowed to burn, it starts complicating the issue. People should be able to have fun, but when people come down there, take advantage of it to that point and abuse it is when we have problems, they're breaking beer bottles down there, so I'm glad that the glass issues come up. And that was my point, thank you.
That's a good point.
It is, Mr. Chairman, and I'm in support of that, Vic, I agree with you. I've seen those pallets, and if there's some way that we can incorporate that in by saying anything with metallogics you cannot burn, or I don't know.
And then clean it up.
You can figure it out.
And then clean it up before you leave. I mean, they leave those fires burning all night, and sometimes they bring some pine wood with rosin in it, and acrid smells off of that neighborhood, and it's just, you know, it's great for people to enjoy the beach, but there's gotta be a responsibility to it also on their part.
And that cleanup is in there, Victor.
Great, thank you.
Let that in, thanks.
Attorney, you have any comment on?
Yes, sir, I'm making notes, obviously, this is the first public hearing, I'm gonna come back, obviously, to you all at your next public hearings. As the next person comes up also, one of the things I did not mention in the summary, which is very important, I know Commissioner Yeager, we've had discussions with regards to beach driving, I spoke to county official vehicles. Section eleven speaks specifically to the amendments proposed to beach driving, and it is a considerable change from what you've gone through in the last two years. As you all recall, last year you changed your fee structure for Gulf County, for visitors to Gulf County. And then I believe late June, early July, you rescinded that and you took away weekly tags and left only visitors on an annual basis. The way section eleven is now written is based on the response that you all had this past year, is it will now only be county property owners and residents, permanent full-time residents of Gulf County. So weekly visitors will not be able to secure a beach driving tag, and that's the way section eleven is currently written, based on those comments. The other section, part two, is that it goes from fifteen miles an hour to ten miles an hour. So those are two changes, I didn't mention them earlier, but they are considerable changes from what you currently have in Gulf County. It will be residents and property owners only going forward.
Chairman, if I may, watch these, one of the next ones coming forward. I think that's where we've had most of the problem, is visitors that come down that have no idea, just like I don't have a whole lot of idea how to drive on snow, they have no idea how to drive and saying they're good on two-wheel drives and get stuck and cause major ruts and those type things, so I think, I think this is probably a good addition. I do want to have some discussion, I hope some of the public has some discussion on, many of them, many of the folks here have children that have lived here all their lives, and as they go off to college, they come back from college, I want to make sure we have something in there that allow the folks that have been longtime residents, so they can be able to access the beach in that same traditional way. So as we go through the public hearings, I'm sure there'll be more discussion, but I do want to figure that one out a little bit, Jeremy.
Alright, that all, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Alright, young lady, come on up, please. Good morning.
Sharon Winchester, one-ninety-three Light Keepers Drive, Beacon Hill, St. Joe Beach. Bonfires, yes, the attorney spoke about them, and I was very disappointed that there was such a short sentence on them. We live at the, near the public access to the beach. Pallets, like the other gentleman said, are a horrible concern. The nails are right at the walkway, they're rusted nails. People are dropping pallets off for later bonfire. They're dropping them off on the roadway or on the right of way. I don't know if your county people have noticed, but they're pulling the rungs out of the walkover, and they're burning the rungs. I know they're burning the rungs because there's no rungs on the ground underneath in the sand. So that's a terrible concern to anybody who's walking over there with the nails particularly, and then they're destroying county property. And I'd like to see something more done on bonfires. A bonfire permit like Walton County has perhaps. They have fire rings in other counties, but it is a very bad concern. When I first came here over a year ago, I was very distraught to see all the nails, you can't walk barefoot with the nails. And I called the sheriff's department, and they referred me to the health department. And the lady said she would look into it, but they haven't stopped.
Ms. Winchester, when I leave this meeting, I'm going out of the way.
Okay.
Going to go look, and, uh, Mr. Mark, are you in here? E. Mark? Go have someone with the county go out there. Thank you for bringing that in, can't you? Yes, sure.
Um, uh, we have had this issue for years at St. Joe Beach. I know that it was an issue prior to being on this board as well, even some of the private walkovers. There are some individuals that will pull the wood if it's loose enough to pull, to burn. Um, but I also know that it, the bonfires are something that the residents truly enjoy at St. Joe Beach, so it is a balance. There is a problem with burning pallets. I, myself, have picked up numerous rusty nails on the beach when there's been a, um, bonfire where the folks have burned pallets. I think some of that is educational, that they're, they're just not thinking, they're burning pallets because they're easy to burn, and they're not thinking about the fact that the, that the, um, nails are left in the beach. So, it is a problem, and it is something that needs to be addressed. However, I do think that there are many, many residents at St. Joe Beach and at Beacon Hill that treasure being able to have a small bonfire at the beach. So, it, it, I think it's something that's important, and in that language, I have had several calls, um, with questions regarding the language, and would this be the right time to ask about that language, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, if you.
Okay.
Sure.
It says it's unlawful for any person to have open fires within one hundred feet to any property or structure. So, the question is, what does that mean to any property that feel that the, the whole beach is operating?
Sure. Um, that section and camping have gone under considerable public discussion, and the question was, property is defined as the mean high water, um, along the Gulf front, and it is really up for the commission. Um, it was a recommendation ultimately that it be adjacent to a structure. Um, so, you look at the beach, and you look at the distance from structures to a potential bonfire on those beaches. If you go a hundred, two hundred, in a lot of places, you're pushing them into the water. So, there was, it's really for the interpretation or the recommendation of the commission today, and then at the end of the month, um, where we led the discussion was ultimately to a structure. But right now, it's or, um, but we need some further direction from you as to, um, it's more defined to put it in a structure a hundred feet as it's currently written.
And if you're a resident who lives on the beach, and you want to have a fire behind your home, but it's within a hundred feet of your structure, are you violating the ordinance?
I would say the majority of those property owners are prior to the native vegetation line, and there are, um, outdoor bonfires, what people have behind their structures and what they do there would not be, as I understand the ordinance, wouldn't be regulated versus visitors to the beach that are past the vegetation line that are opening bonfires. It's a difference under the Burris Act and some of the other warehouse clauses of people's private rights on their home versus the sandy shores of Gulf, Gulf, Gulf County.
I think that this section will, we'll probably need to look at it a little further and maybe add in some language about what can be used in a bonfire and be certain we're not regulating a, a person's right to have a bonfire behind their home. I, I'm not certain where the hundred feet, where the bonfires can be if we apply the hundred feet, but I, I do think that this is probably a section that we may need to expand on.
Sure. All right, will you throw it, Commissioner?
Okay, thank you. I, I kind of had that tagged, too. Uh, I, I would prefer just to take property out of there to leave it as structures, and then there's no confusion, uh, as far as.
Leave property?
As far as that. And another thing, I, I just wanted to mention at some point during the public hearing is, this is the, the first leave no trace ordinance that, that we've put into effect. There will obviously be tweaks on this as, as we go and as we grow and as we, as, as we see changes needed. So, I think the further discussion is, is, once we get this in place, there may be some more tweaks that we need to do, but this public hearing is great to, to understand what the public wants and what the public here that live here, uh, uh, needs in, in this ordinance. So, uh, in saying that, I just want to, to say that it can be tweaked even after we adopt it, but we appreciate the comments.
Anyone else in the audience?
Yes, ma'am. Young lady, come on, come on.
Melina, excuse me, Melina Ealem, seventy-two seventy-two west highway ninety-eight, St. Joe Beach. Um, I'm really glad that a leave no trace ordinance has been drafted and that, uh, we are thinking along the lines of restoring our beach and, um, keeping it looking like it should. And, um, I, there's a couple of things that I noticed in the, uh, ordinance that I don't feel are strong enough. Um, on the issue of bonfires, um, I honestly feel that bonfires should be eliminated totally, and my main reason for that, aside from the fact that people do leave the litter on the beach and they do burn pallets that have nails that can become future dangers, um, the main, my main issue with it is the smoke. Um, I live right across from the beach, and when bonfires are occurring, I cannot sit on, out on my deck because I, the smoke is polluting our, our environment, um, even in the backyard of my home. Um, I have witnessed that and had to come in and not been able to sit out and enjoy, uh, being out in the evening, um, on my deck because of the thick smoke, especially in times when there's very little wind. Uh, in the middle of summer, it gets very, very hot. Another concern that we might not be thinking about now because maybe there has not been a problem is that during times of drought, uh, burning the fires close to vegetation could start a fire in the dunes. Uh, it could even reach the palm trees. Uh, so many of the palm trees along that strip of ninety-eight there are overgrown and have dead, uh, growth on them. They're not, they're not maintained, which of course is another issue, uh, with the public works, I would assume. Uh, but I, I believe that that's a tragedy in the making or a disaster in the making if bonfires are, uh, permitted. Um, I realize people love having them, and it's been, they've been allowed to have it in the past, but, uh, I, I think, um, it, it's, it should be, they should be left out. Another issue I have is with digging holes. Um, I don't believe people should be digging holes in the beach anyhow. Uh, St. Joe Beach is very narrow, and there have been many times when I've walked the beach or walked my dogs on their leashes on the beach, and they have fallen into a hole because maybe it was dark and we could not see the hole. I, I know that, you know, we're saying that people need to fill the hole in, but why do people need, I don't understand why people need to burn on the beach or dig holes in the beach. Um, another issue I have, and I don't really have, uh, the problem on St. Joe Beach to deal with, is driving on the beach. I don't know why people are allowed to drive on the beach at all. It seems to me a total, um, uh, totally, uh, destructive. Uh, it leaves ruts in the beach, it pollutes the air, and erosion, uh, is a big concern. I feel for all the people who live out on the Cape who have beautiful properties, and they have to deal with a sea of cars altogether having their, uh, caravans. Um, and the final thing that I want to say and ask.
Ma'am, hold just a moment with you. Time to move further. Is it just, she's about to.
Okay, I'm wrapping it up.
All right, come on.
Because I would like to know what strategies are in place to enforce this ordinance once it gets approved. Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else? On leave no trace. One else, if you could, please. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, while he's coming, is Steven, can he, yeah, but Danny, it's hot. Is it?
Hey, cooler down.
Steve or somebody that can get into that thing. You do it, huh?
He was good to me.
He was good to you? Good, good morning. Uh, give your name right over here.
Clay Lewis, forty-four fifty-two Cape Sand Blast Road.
Your name, sir?
Clay Lewis.
Clay, good, Clay, okay.
Um, I wasn't gonna, I'm primarily not here in consideration to this ordinance, but I do have a couple of things that I might like to, to, to add. Um, you know, we have, we're always talking about safety and property rights and things of that nature. Um, and, you know, I do believe that, that beach driving should be permitted to the residents and, and owners, um, but you do have, uh, companies that, that rent, let's say golf carts that have beach driving stickers on them, uh, to tourists and things like that. And so, those people are, are, are able to, to drive on the beach as well. It could be a safety issue, I don't know. Um, Cape Sand Blast Road, uh, as far as I know, um, is a state road, and, uh, golf carts supposedly aren't to be allowed on state roads, um, as well as motorized vehicles on the golf cart. Those things are evident, uh, you know, in large amounts, uh, which I believe, uh, could be a safety issue. Um, you know, kids driving golf carts that don't even have a driver's license. So, you know, none of those things that are even right on the road are enforced, and, and the work for, for the county, in my view, is not in crafting the ordinance, it's enforcing the ordinance. Um, the leave no trace, we also have, this is my observation, uh, on Indian Pass Beach, uh, there are trash cans, uh, that people can, can leave their cans debris, uh, whatever and, um, assume are picked up by the county. We have none of that on, uh, Cape Sand Blast except at the public, uh, except a few of the public beach accesses, we have trash cans. A lot of the public beach accesses, there, there are no trash cans, and so people, and even, let's say, the kayak canoe launch on the bay, uh, there are no trash cans for people to leave their debris, so they scatter it in the wetlands and, and all that kind of stuff. So, enforcement, you know, is, is, is where it's at, you know? It's easy to craft and write and pass an ordinance, but enforcement is another thing. Thank you.
I just, sure, one thing, I, I think we, I almost understood, about every five hundred feet, even on outside the, on the Cape, the, I call it the outside beach. Well, maybe you, here we go.
On Indian Pass, there are every mile, my, every mile, or if there's, if there's a more populated area in between each mile, there's, has a can on the Cape there at all our public beach accesses. I do not believe we would have one at Troydale with the, where the kayak is, but all the, the other ones, in fact, Salinas has multiple cans, so, um, we could put more on the Cape if, if necessary.
Yeah, and I, I do think we probably need one at Troydale.
Yep.
Other folks either.
Sure, okay. Uh, have anyone else? While she's coming up, uh, we have a fuse blown in our unit, and Mr. Mark and his staff's working on it, and he said maybe in minutes can have it going.
Great. Um, Gail Alsobruck, one six two Watermark Way, Port St. Joe. First, thank you for this ordinance. Um, the area in which I live is mostly rentals, and sometimes in the summer, it's very difficult to be a resident. People are there for a short period of time, and they, they want to maximize and, and have a great time, and sometimes that interferes, that often interferes with peace and enjoyment of our property, so thank you. Just one thing to kind of connect two parts of this ordinance. One is about covering the holes that you dig, and the other is about bonfires and being able to, you know, dig a hole for a bonfire. I'm, I know of a, I know a person who walked up, was just walking on the sand, it wasn't here, but a bonfire had been covered over the night before, and that's, it's still hot, and she spent several weeks in the burn unit because her feet were burned to, you know, really horribly burned. So, just one thing to think about, if we allow the bonfires, if we allow them to dig holes and we allow them to have bonfires in the holes, um, they don't want to cover them up, you know? It's really hard to get them all cooled down and, and, and out before you put more sand on them. So, that's just something to, to think about in dealing with those two aspects of the ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else? Leave no trace.
Excuse me, I call, um, Candace Warren, one three zero White Sands Drive, Cape Sand Blast. Um, I have solutions here. I'm not, I'm so thrilled that you guys are even considering this ordinance. Um, I do believe that there is a economic and way of taking care of some of this by having, um, a, somebody start a little business that has, people are leaving, at, instead of leaving their chairs and their broken-down, um, tents on the beach for us to pick up, that there'll be a little business for someone, even if it's a high school group, that you leave your stuff there and sell it to the next person who's coming on the beach. You know, at least it's not trash. Um, I also, my husband and I, when we do bonfires, we have our own little pit that we bring out to the beach. We pull it after we had our fun, we pull it up to the dune line, go home, because it's usually by one in the morning or something, go back there by nine in the morning and clean up our mess. And there's no mess in the sand. It's a disc that we put our, um, logs in. Just things like that, if we could think ahead and make them available on the Cape or on St. Joe Beach to people, it, it would make half of this not an issue. That's, and again, one more time, thank you for even considering this.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, um, page five of the ordinance under section two definitions, as I mentioned earlier, I wanted to just restate it for the public. The, um, draft that was provided to the clerk's office and to the public for the last week and a half has been the definition of Gulf County beaches, which you had adopted, I think, about ten years ago for other ordinances. As you read through it, on the third line down, it'll reference the areas that are defined as beaches in Gulf County, and you'll see that there's a line called the sandy shores of St. Joseph Bay. That's been included, um, in discussion with the, with the, um, committee and the staff. We've included that. Obviously, if there's a sandy shore within the interior of St. Joseph Bay, that will be included in this ordinance as well, whereas in the past, that was not defined necessarily as Gulf County beach. So, I wanted to point that out to you in your draft that you have in front of you that wasn't available to the public last week, but that four words were added as well.
Thank you. Chairman, on that same, uh, in definitions, there's two references to thirty B, I think was probably meant to be thirty B and thirty E, so that's just a typo, but that, that will need to be corrected.
All right. Have anyone else? Leave no trace. Want any audience? You want any audience? All right, public discussion, leave no trace is now closed.
It, it, I, I've got a, a couple of further comments. Most of the things that I, I was going to bring up are, have been talked about. Um, one of the things, uh, that's in this ordinance is shark fishing, and we certainly don't need shark fishing and, and, and coming around where we're, we've got tourists swimming, and we're swimming, and all those kinds of things. So, I, I'm glad it's in there. One of the, one of the options that we may have, and, and this is open for public comment, we may not even want to touch it, but, uh, we've got a section from, uh, the Stuphol, the southern edge of Stuphol around to, uh, Eglin Air Force Base, uh, beginning of property all around that point, because, you know, a, a mile of beach there that nobody lives, and, and mostly it's fishing. Uh, very rarely do you see somebody swimming in that general area, so if, uh, we may want to look at, uh, the fishing aspect of, of this particular ordinance in that particular section where there's no homes, where there's no folks swimming, and, and that, and it's traditionally used for, for fishing, uh, food for thought. Uh, we don't have to incorporate right now, but I just want people to, to hear. Um, I've mentioned, uh, the need for ability for the children of folks that have lived here all their lives to, to figure out how we can extend that to those siblings that are off to college but come home for the summer and, and those type of things. Uh, one other thing, a couple of times we've mentioned in here from, uh, the published sunset, published, uh, uh, time of sunrise, and that's, uh, a little bit arbitrary. I think we could probably put from, from nine PM to seven AM. It'd be a little bit more defined. I'll leave that to the attorney to, to. I'll leave that to the attorney to that particular comment. And I think that that's all I had, other than what we had already discussed, Mr. Chairman.
Good deal. Okay, we'll back it up. Just anyone in the audience on what Commissioner Yeager brought forth? Anyone want to make a comment on that? If you do, I'll back up. Let me say this, everyone that's came up has given some great, great input on this. And that's what it's all about. We need input, then we can speak this thing. All right, we already have you nine minutes.
Okay, I appreciate the nine, the hours. But I do think nine is way too late. Or too, yeah, no, it should be later. I mean, earlier. We, I'm.
Wait a minute, what, what you want, later hours?
I walk the beach with the patrol. And we have blows that happen at 8:00, at 7:30 at night. And to have a car on the beach after 7:00 is ridiculous.
I was more referring to the stuff that's on the beach and the fishing, that type of thing. We got on there to pull that stuff back by sunset, that type of thing.
That I get, but a car or a golf cart does not belong on the beach in the summer. Any other time, they could go to midnight. But during that period, we're going to lose a lot of babies.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just as a final comment, as this has been published and put out to the community, the public comment, obviously, that you received today, and as the attorney for the county received, comment from your property owners inquiring, as well as your commercial business owners. And so I mentioned it earlier, and I just wanted to offer to you five commissioners again for your consideration over the next two weeks. The language in the ordinance currently defines abandoned property at a certain time to pull back to the toe of the dune. The property owners in the comments that have received, asked for your consideration, is if they go to the administrator, and the way I've described it and the way it would be interpreted if you asked me, is if they go to the county administration office and fill out the one-page permit application as a property owner, identify who they are, the property that they own, and the equipment that is not abandoned and it's theirs, the county will have a way to mark or tag or put a sticker on it. So the property owners along these sandy shores and the beaches of Gulf County have an outlet to go to the administration to get a tag to indicate that it is their property, on their property, and it is permissible to leave it there. That would go for those commercial businesses that rent out, if you will, equipment to be there as well. To leave no trace is for abandoned personal property, not for claimed personal property. And that permit application process would be the outlet for those property owners to identify.
Comment forward on this, leave no trace. All right. January the 27th at 5:01 PM, am I correct there?
Yes, sir.
We'll have the second meeting on the leave no trace. So write that down in your calendar or memory bank and let's see you back then. Next, public hearing ordinance, recreational vehicles.
Mr. Chairman, the second public notice and public hearing today is the ordinance with regards to recreational vehicles. Again, same public notice that went out to the public. It was advertised for January 5th and January 19th, compliant with Florida statute 125 subsection 66. It was seven days in advance of today's first public hearing and it is five days in advance of your second public hearing, the public notices. I asked the planning department to go back and pull for us prior to today's meeting and public hearing, the planning board meetings that you have had in consideration of this. And then you commissioners that recall from three years ago, you had several public hearings before you all on a prior RV ordinance introduction and public hearings. They pulled up seven different PDRB meetings where they have considered the language dating back to 2011. And the planning department provided those dates and those agendas to us for today. The ordinance title reads as follows, and then I will summarize the restrictions and the definitions in there, and then turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance title is, reads as follows. An ordinance of Gulf County, Florida for creating policies regulating recreational vehicles, RVs, and their location placement, RVs per parcel, use and storage of RVs within both unincorporated Gulf County and within the coastal corridor, to be commonly referred to as the Gulf County RV ordinance. For said policies to be amended, be codified, and become part of the Gulf County Land Development Regulations, the LDRs, and providing for the repealer, severability, and modifications that may arise from consideration of public hearings, and providing for an effective date. Commissioners, you have a draft proposed ordinance for RVs in front of each of you. And it's been available through the, to the public as well. As I indicated, we've had considerable PDRB comment and modifications over the last year and a half on this most recent draft. And they have offered their comments, and this is a reflection of those hearings in each amendment. We have the planning department here as well. As you go through the ordinance, and for you that recall the prior, the whereas clauses have been amended to reflect both the public safety concerns as well as the private property rights within Gulf County. The first two pages are those whereas clauses. And on page three of the actual ordinance, it goes into beginning to define this ordinance and the proposed regulations in Gulf County. If you recall, three years ago, there was a tourist corridor, if you will, that there was, there is a solid waste ordinance that you all have that defines a tourist corridor in Gulf County. The prior RV ordinance mirrored that tourist corridor, if you will, in the RV regulations. Since that time, from the public comments, from the contractors, from the property owners, from the planning department to building department, that tourist corridor has been modified and amended and evolved into a coastal construction corridor. That coastal construction corridor is defined on page three under section four. And what the county planning department and my office and the building department have done is created, or introduced for your consideration, three different coastal construction corridors. They are tied to the Florida building codes, as well as your FEMA maps, and also historically, your intracoastal canal as another barrier within Gulf County. There is a color map that's attached to the original. Commissioners, you have the colors provided to you. We have a larger map for your review and for the public. There's three different lines. As I mentioned, there's an intercoastal, then there's a Florida building code. And I believe George is here to further elaborate if you all have questions, which is a mile off of the mean high water. And then there's a third line, which is a Class D for windborne debris, which is a 1,500 foot from the mean high water line. And when that map is rolled out, the public will understand it'll be three different lines. I think it's a yellow, an orange, and a red. The coastal construction corridor, those three different interpretations have been offered for your consideration through the PDRB and our various staff. There's a definition of the recreational vehicle, and then obviously parcels and your subdivisions and mobile homes. With regards to the regulations under section six, anyone outside of the defined area, if you were to consider this proposed ordinance, there's those three different lines, a mile, 1,500 feet, or the intracoastal. If you were to define a coastal construction corridor as one of those three areas, anything landward of that line, it would not change. The regulations in Gulf County. Your land development regulations currently, as they're written under section 3.02, indicate that you're able to have one RV per parcel, that the lot coverage for the RVs not to exceed 30% of impervious coverage, that you need two parking spaces, that you meet all standard building setbacks, and it must comply with all the LDR and comp plans as it currently are written. So that simply reaffirms this ordinance, anything landward of that line that you'll see in a moment. Anything seaward of that line, as you define it, is then under section B, under section six. And it reads as follows, and I'll read it just for clarification for the public and for your commissions. It says, RVs permitted within the defined coastal construction corridor shall be bound to all regulations stated above with the following additional restrictions. Nonpermitted and previously existing RV use and occupancy within the defined coastal corridor is strictly prohibited. Existing and permitted RVs within the coastal construction corridor may not set up or be occupied exclusively for temporary residential purposes by the owners of lots during hurricane season as defined by NOAA, unless there is continuous and uninterrupted use and occupancy. Commercial uses of RVs along the coastal corridor are strictly prohibited without variance application, process, and approval by the PDRB, and a final approval by the county commission. Thereafter, the occupancy must be continuous and RV not left unattended or unoccupied for 48 hours. Coastal construction corridor as defined above shall constitute portions of Gulf County mapped and designated in Gulf County, and the lands falling within these areas that will be considered by you as the commissioners. Then there's exceptional circumstances. Under the exceptional circumstances, what we've done as this has evolved through your planning department and your planning board, is to come up with the scenarios where residents and owners within Gulf County can come before the PDRB on an application and then ultimately come before you commissioners, seeking a variance to permit them to stay under a hardship exception. The first would be when RVs located on lots that are being stored and not occupied and are being located on a lot, same as an occupied principal dwelling. In essence, if you own a home in this coastal corridor, you are able to keep your RV on that property as you have a stick-built, single-family dwelling and it's simply being used for storage. The second is construction periods. The use and occupancy of an RV within the coastal construction corridor during construction or repair of a primary dwelling, unit, business shall be afforded consideration by the PDRB and approval of the commission for up to 100 consecutive days and renewable upon reapplication thereafter. Inclimate weather, hurricanes, folks can come down. They can actually build their homes in Gulf County as long as they apply for a variance and approval of the county to have the RV on the property while they're constructing or rebuilding their home. Emergency periods under section three, which is the use and occupancy of RVs as a dwelling unit during disaster recovery, fire, weather event, family medical emergencies, visiting Gulf County and residing in an RV while a family member is in care of an area hospital, shall be afforded consideration by the PDRB and approval of the commission up to 180 days. Hardship exceptions. The owner of both the same lot and parcel and RV within the defined corridor may, upon application, seek a hardship exception from specifically section B1 of the coastal corridor and permit the continued ownership and maintenance and continuous residential occupancy of an established RV within the restricted RV zone under previous county guidelines. In essence, this is your grandfather clause. If you currently own an RV and occupy, use and occupy a recreational vehicle in Gulf County, seaward of this line, and it is uninterrupted and you continue to do it and you properly permit your RV on a annual basis, you'll be continued to allow to do that. And in essence, that's your grandfathering clause. Anybody currently in Gulf County that's using and living in it will be able to continue to do that. The only two clauses with regards to the grandfather clause is when they sell the property, that grandfathering ceases to exist. And also, if it transfers the property ownership to anybody else in name other than the current permittee and the owners of that property, it will cease to exist as well. The final sections are with regards to enforcement and the effective date. What we've done through the planning department, your PDRB, and the comments at your public hearings before those advisory committees is to create a grace period, if you will, for people in Gulf County to understand and comply with this. And also, for the county to implement a permit process and a one-page application. I think the comments and the discussion would be secured through the building department. And that proposed date would be March 1st. As we move forward, the idea was it was going to be a three or four month grace period. As this goes forward into January, if you wish to move that date back, we'd hopefully have that recommendation from you as well. Again, this is the first public hearing and comment. The second will be at 5:01 PM on January 27th. Commissioners, any questions, we'll be happy to answer. And hopefully, we can get that map up and folks can all look at that if they haven't seen the lines already. The, I've received a couple of the forms. They asked me to introduce folks today. So I have a couple of forms filled out under the county speaking, public speaking ordinance. There is a Linda Sertich, a Mr. Jay Rish, and a Clay Lewis. And if you would, sir, before you take general public comment, these forms are filled out in advance. Mrs. Linda Sertich.
All right, I wasn't aware of it. But before we bring these big people up, hopefully, hopefully the, hopefully the attorney has shed some light onto some questions. I know concerning this ordinance, remember back, everything, this is primarily for the 1,500 feet. There's three steps to it. From the intercoastal north, there's no change in it, other than one for partial. But hopefully, he answered some of the questions here. All right, this time, gentlemen, we'll yield to the young ladies. Miss Linda, come up, please. There we go. Give your name, not a we.
Linda Sertich, 925 Olive Avenue, which happens to be the wrong side of the street because I'm within the 1,500 foot range.
Oh, you're good.
But on the other side of the road.
Okay, you have a full.
Okay. We have a travel trailer. We live here. We permanently live here. And I realize we can get in under the grandfather clause. But it's, what's written in here is the trailer that's on the lot. And I, does that mean I can never buy a new trailer? I, young, I plan on living here for 30 years. That trailer's going to get old.
That's a good question. That's a good question.
And then, I can't think. Oh, then also, we bought this trailer. We're from Minnesota, so when we, like hurricane, we're nervous about that. So we bought the trailer the way it is. So if a hurricane comes, we can pull the trailer to Minnesota if we want to and bring it back, come back to live. But if I leave for 48 hours, I lose my grandfather clause. That's the way I'm reading it. This is a really hard ordinance to read. But that's the way I'm reading it. If I take that trailer up the lot, that's it.
We have in this public to bring these up before we can address them. And we need to know your feelings.
Yes.
Your input.
And it's an expensive trailer. I don't want to leave it here during a hurricane.
Can you, if you decide to update, get a new one?
Right.
It needs to be addressed.
And I don't think, the way it's written, I don't think, believe I can, so. All right?
All right. Thank you, Linda. Any cheer you can.
I do think on that issue, as we work through this ordinance, I do believe that we need to be cautious with penalizing someone for moving an RV for an approaching storm. And if we incentivize people to roll the dice and hope that the storm doesn't hit because they will miss their grandfather clause, I think that could be a problem. So if there is some way we could carve that out, that if the RV is moved because there is an approaching hurricane, that that would not eliminate their grandfathering.
That's a good question. Let's go here to the attorney.
Mr. Chairman, that is, I'd like to thank Ms. Sertich for the comments. If you go back to your 2011 draft of the RV ordinance, there was a two-page evacuation provisions and regulations of if you lived within this corridor, what you would have to do. Through public comment, they wanted to make it a clear line. I think in terms of the interpretation, certainly, one of the public policies that's stated in the whereas clauses is the purpose of the ordinance, in essence, one of them is public safety, is to make sure that these mobile recreational vehicles are not here during inclement weather. So certainly, if you move it for that reason, when we're in cone of whatever, that you have the ability to come back. And I can obviously add some additional language training now and two weeks from now. The other comment about replacing it, the intent and the policy behind it, you'll see, is that there's a use and occupancy. It's not specific to a actual, the specific RV. It's the use and occupancy of a recreational vehicle. And certainly, if folks who are grandfathered in want to upgrade or get new or replace or do what have you, they've already been grandfathered in. If there's additional language that would specify that they have the ability to do that, as long as they're still the owners and there's still a continuous occupancy of the permittee, they're able to upgrade and get something new and come on 10, 20, 30 years from now. So that provision, and I can further illustrate that in the language of the whereas clauses.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. Clay Lewis, 4452 Cape Sandblast Road. I was front and center of this ordinance last time around. The commissioners that were there then probably remember, even though, getting older, we have limited memories. The issue, I mean, you're calling the coastal construction area and the tourist corridor. The issues that... were exempt, um, such as, I, I don't see anywhere on here about Indian Pass Road, for instance, which definitely falls into the criteria of the coastal corridor, whichever term you use, 1,500 feet or, you know, south of the intercoastal, or this, that, and the other. You mentioned in this, you know, the blight and sprawl. If you exempt places, uh, then that blight and sprawl will happen in the places that are exempt. It just seems to reason that that's going to be the case. Exemption for a, a primary dwelling, uh, throughout the year. I mean, it can be throughout the year, whether a storm comes or not. They're going to have the same impact. When a storm comes, they're not going to pick and choose to say, well, this, this, this RV is, is by a primary dwelling, we're not going to wipe it out, we're going to, we're going to wipe the ones out that, that don't have a primary dwelling there. So I, I find that hard to, to, to fathom, as far as, you know, what rights the people with a primary dwelling have, as opposed to people that don't have a primary dwelling. You know, the, the true definition of a hardship, I mean, do I not have to have shoes, be able to afford shoes to qualify for a hardship, or, you know, are you going to check my bank records, or tax returns, or what? I have, I, I don't see anything that really defines a hardship. And so I put that in, in your hands, if you were to pass this, as determining if I have a hardship or not. It says that all RVs must meet setbacks in Section 6, uh, number 4. I'm wondering if those also, uh, apply.
I, I think we need to let him continue, but, but I do think we, we're going to have an awful lot of people that are, that want to talk here, so time...
Couple, couple more statements. Thank you.
I hear. I'm good. Mr. Jaeger? I'll have a second. Okay. I'll have a break.
Do, do RVs that are exempted with a primary residence, do they have to meet the setbacks of the neighboring property? Do, under Section 5, all RVs must comply, so, I mean, people come in and out of town and bring their RVs, you know, if they're homeowners down here, they'll bring them from wherever, go back and forth. But, uh, there, there's a lot of things to consider. And just like I spoke about the, uh, leave no trace, it's, it's not, the work comes in, in forcing it equally, with it, with fairness for all. Thank you.
I think, uh, to address some of Mr. Lewis's comments, I know George is here, and it'd be very helpful for you to have comment from staff with regards specifically to the C-word zones. And if George can come up and offer you some comments with regards to the policy or the intent behind what was introduced in terms of defining these zones, he can maybe elaborate a little bit further to help Clay and some of the other people in the public understand. A primary dwelling, and I can comment on this before you come up, George, the intent from the public hearings was, if you live in a primary dwelling and you have a storm coming, you're going to take your RV and leave. If you're living in your RV as a primary dwelling and the storm is coming, you're going to hook it up and you're going to leave. Those are both permitted within Gulf County in this coastal construction corridor. The county has something on record, knowing the owner, it's insured, and where it's being held in this zone. So these public safety and public policies that are put in the whereas clauses are to protect the public within this coastal corridor, both people with their homes and the people that are losing them as permanent dwellings. And I think George can maybe elaborate a little bit further on the Florida Building Code and how the zones came to be.
All right, uh, Mr. Rich, do you want to yield, Tim, or you want to come on up?
I'll focus here.
Yeah, come on, come on. Then we'll, uh, go to George.
Good morning, Jay.
Good morning. Jay Rich, Gulf County, Mr. Chairman. As we talk about these issues, are very important issues, they're issues that we need some resolution on, but, um, if you'll pardon the, the expression, this is a sausage-making process right now, and I'm not so sure on this particular, we've gotten the hog out of the chute yet. So there's a lot of work to be done. Um, I'm here representing clients on both sides of the issue, kind of educating myself, trying to lend a few suggestions based on some of my knowledge, and I think we've sold $650 million worth of property in Gulf County pretty much exclusively in the last 20 years, so we've had a few transactions. Um, it's, it's very important for people to understand this is a county that has a diverse socioeconomic strata. And we don't want to lose the sight of the many good people that come down here, bring a nice RV, uh, some of them are $250,000, $300,000 RVs, that they spend a lot of money in our businesses, uh, they buy other properties because they like what's here. On the same token, when we get, uh, some good old boys that come down here in the junker and want to take over the neighborhood, we got to do something about that, too. And I don't envy you all's job in deciphering that, enforcing that, uh, the sheriff's, his job, uh, I, I tell the audience, uh, the sheriff does not enforce nor the board the covenants and restrictions of the subdivision. If you live in a subdivision and somebody's breaking the covenants, you have remedies under civil law. I'm not a lawyer, but I think the attorneys in the room would, would echo that phrase. Um, so, a little bit of education to the public. I'd like to see us work on this and not get in a hurry, I guess is my main focus here today. Uh, there may be some areas of exemption, everybody's not going to agree, but if everybody agreed, we wouldn't have fun in life now, would we? Uh, but, um, it looks to me like that, I'm not up here to filibuster, I'm not up here to make demands, uh, give concessions, what have you, but I've got people on both sides of the issue, and I think we need a little bit more time to digest this, understand where we're going forward, just drop the gavel and, and, and go forward with this. And I think that the attorney staff and you all are doing the right thing and, and taking your time, and, and I would like to first look at some common sense approach to enforcement, exemptions, those type of things, and, and see if we can work through this issue, uh, you know, in a, in a nice, prolonged, protracted manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, before I go to the public, uh, George, would you come up now?
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, George Knight, Gulf County Building Department. Uh, I can only explain to you about these wind lines up here as they relate to building. Primarily, that's what we are involved in, in the building department, building, not necessarily RVs, but the three distinct lines are different in that they're different wind categories, okay?
All right, would you step over? And if you want to turn around, I think you can talk, talk loud enough to pick up...
The first category is...
Turn around face where they can see.
Is the, the yellow line here, and for lack of a better word, that's the exposure D-zone in building, and it's kind of like the high-velocity impact area. In other words, when a home is designed to be built within that 1,500 feet, it has to be designed and built stronger than any of the other areas in the county, okay? It's, it's an area where they're, they're expecting the highest impact from a storm on a structure, on a building. That also relates to any structure that's built, not just single-family homes, but hole barns, sheds, any accessory structure or stretchery to a principal dwelling has to be constructed extremely strong in that 1,500-feet zone. The next line that you got here is the, the orange, that is actually the one mile, that's what's considered the windborne debris region of the county. Now, it's still a hurricane-prone region, but it's expected that the impacts in that area will not be quite as strong as in that first 1,500 feet. But it is an area where windborne debris is expected to occur during a storm. In other words, things being blown around, thrown around, and otherwise creating havoc and pandemonies, okay? So these two zones here, as designated by the Florida Building Code, are your, your high-velocity zones, or zones of greater importance as far as wind loading. The intercoastal waterway is simply a line that the Board of County Commissioners back in 2009 or 10, designated this as a demarcation line between our different wind zones of being 140 and 130. Because, according to the charts in the Florida Building Code, our county is kind of crisscrossed. You came up with this line, and, and that's, other than that being the difference between 140 and 130, that line really is irrelevant to building. Okay? Any other questions? I said, on the wind line.
Thank you, George. All right, now we'll go to our public comment. Anyone in the audience, make any comments, questions, this RV ordinance, please come up.
Yes, sir, I'm Paul Digby, 239 Highland View, Benega Street. Paul Digby, D-I-G-B-Y. The, uh, me and my family, for, we got three kids, we've camped at the state park, uh, for over 30 years. As you know, it's harder to get in over there, so three years ago, all my kids are grown and gone, me and my wife, we bought the place out at Highland View, 239 Benega Street. I went and got with George, and he said, told me what I had to do to get the permits, and we got some hole barns, and we got one RV on a 95-by-100 lot that's going to fall within exemption. But we don't necessarily keep it there all the time. If the kids want to come down to Panama City, we'll hook to it and haul it over there. It sounds to me like I'm going to have a problem with this exemption rule under the continued occupancy rule. The, uh, we stay there, we come down two to three times, two times a month, and, uh, they, uh, and sometimes two or three weeks during the summer, and sometime in the fall and winter. But I'd like to see something where I could move it off of the lot and then reset it back up, not just in a hurricane season. And then the, uh, the other option is that, uh, if, I know I can do the hardship exemption, the, um, so what I, and I think I could qualify for that, so, but if me and my wife, we're still young yet, I don't have any tendons of selling the lot, but once we die and I leave my property to my three kids, I'd like for that grandfather clause to apply to them in the way he just read it, it won't. The, uh, so I would like for my kids, just like you said, that has grown up, come down here camping in, in the bay, and to continue to be doing that after I'm being gone. The, uh, thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Got someone over here? Out here? Come on up.
My name is Rob Haney, I live in Highland View.
Bob, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Rob, you have the full.
I just, uh, bought some property in March and had my camper on it. I'm retired, and I moved down here from Michigan, and I have some property up in Michigan. And I would like to go back up to Michigan for the summer, and the fall, for the nice weather, and the good hunting and all that, and be able to come back here to my camper, you know, to live, and live up there, too, because I'm sure a lot of retired people will be doing the same thing. They come down here in the winter, you know, and then go back where they come from, you know, in the summer. And, uh, I'd just like to maybe be able to put something that in there, too, you know, where, you know, I, I'd be grandfathered in, but it sounds like if I leave for a certain month, time's not going to be occupied. And I'd like to be able to come back to that, because I'm not rich, you know, and that's, I live in a camper, you know, and I'm glad to be able to do that, you know, three blocks from the beach. And I take care of it, and a lot of other people around here that have been doing the same thing I'm doing, they take care of it. And I don't know why they don't, um, make people take care of their stuff around there, but there's some houses with all trashed out around them, and it looks terrible, and they don't mow the lawns. And I know certain other areas, they make people, you know, be responsible for their areas, so, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Mr. Tony, if he makes one up. He, he does have a...
Absolutely. Uh, Commissioners, what I can offer to you, um, is possibly some, this Florida statute and Florida case law, and I think it will help the commission and the public, obviously, shape this discussion over this month.
Okay.
Um, Florida Statute 222, subsection 05, addresses and constitutes dwellings for the purposes of a homestead. Um, the Florida courts have taken the statutes, and you have motorhomes and mobile homes. Um, the courts and the statute have gone on to define what a mobile home is. Um, and then the cases in Florida have to try to determine through the judges whether or not that homestead exemption actually applies to a recreational vehicle. Um, the courts in Florida have upheld the statute and have not extended it to recreational vehicles, but what they have said is that if a RV is treated and is permanently, the word permanently parked, and permanently lived in, and permanently utilized as their primary home, that in Florida it can be applied for and utilized as a homestead exemption, which would extend the discussion as their primary dwelling. But one of the things in the case judgment is the permanent parking, that it doesn't get up and go, because other homestead exemptions in, in Gulf County and throughout Florida, is you have a home, you can't take your home with you. And so the courts have looked at these mobile recreational vehicles, is that if they are permanently parked, that they are to be considered for homestead exemption. And that's a whole nother discussion, but the statute and the case law give you some guidance and the public as to what is considered permanent structures and what is not. And so when the language with regards to permanently using and occupying an RV in Gulf County as your primary dwelling, that's where it derives from. It comes from your statute and your case law. Um, and hopefully provides you some guidance as you go through this discussion over the next two weeks.
Good, good.
Yes, sure.
So, Mr. Novak, just to clarify, so if someone has an RV on their lot, but they leave for six months to go live elsewhere, but they come back and live in that RV for six months and the RV remains, then that RV can remain, that, that is still grandfathered, because the RV was not moved, even though they are not physically occupying for a portion of the year?
Uh, the way the ordinance is currently written during NOAA's hurricane season, if you are within that zone, you cannot leave it unoccupied for whatever you define that as. Right now, it's currently 48 hours, it was 72, I think, a year or two ago, Ms. Harman, she was at the hearings, I think it was, uh, six, five or six days. It's gone all over the board, but it's whatever's unoccupied and unattended during hurricane season, during, in that zone. So you can't, you cannot leave it parked on a piece of property if it's not your primary dwelling. If there's exemptions, as you interpret through your hardship, that someone leaves to go visit family for two or three weeks, they're permitted, one. It's registered with the county, two. The county's aware of who owns it and where to contact them, it's insured. There's a lot of steps for public safety that have been taken to secure that, that RV, that property owner, and also the adjacent property owners. And so the ordinance, as it's written right now, would provide those functions or those safeguards to the county to be able to track that down if we had that 48 hours. And it's come down to 48, but it's been as many as six days, and it's gone down to 72, and right now it's written as 48. So whatever you all interpret that and, and recommend.
Let me ask, uh, Rob, let me just ask you a question. You say you've, and we have a lot of people in Gulf County, I live in, we were here, we have people up there from Minnesota, very fine people that come down to spend the harsh winter here, but they pull out and go back, and I think we have the same situation. I know we do, I know people right here that does that. I'm going to just ask you, you don't have to ask you. You registered vote in Michigan, or you registered vote in Florida?
Michigan, Florida.
Florida, you're a Florida registered voter, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As the public discussion keeps, continues, there's three elements that you all have considered over the last four years. It's what has Gulf County allowed historically. Currently, what are people use, utilizing it for? And what is the, uh, public policy behind going forward in terms of RVs in Gulf County? And so the ordinance before you, goal, as it's written, is to address the people that have previously bought a piece of property and have an RV on it, the people that currently want to continue to use it, and it provides exemptions and hardships, to address it the second. And then the third is going forward, public notice in Gulf County is there are regulations for a coastal construction corridor for someone that wants to buy a piece of property and utilize it for something other than a single-family dwelling in, within the corridor. So those three goals, if you will, through this ordinance, are what it's striving to address, is your current RV, future RV, and then historically what you've allowed in the past. And the grandfathering and the exemptions have been crafted and modified over the last couple of years to try to address those concerns for people that previously bought here in the county for that intended use. Um, and like I said, the public comment, we can hopefully modify it some more to address the current owners.
One of the issues that I see...
The people that currently want to continue to use it and it provides exemptions and hardships, so address it the second. And then the third is going forward, public notice in Gulf County is that our regulations for a coastal construction corridor, for someone that wants to buy a piece of property and utilize it for something other than a single-family dwelling in, within the corridor. So those three goals, if you will, through this ordinance, are what it's striving to address, is your current RV, future RV, and then historically what you've allowed in the past. And the grandfathering and the exemptions have been crafted and modified over the last couple of years to try to address those concerns for people that previously bought here in the county for that intended use. Um, and like I said, the public comment, we can hopefully modify it some more to address the current owners.
One of the issues that I see is defining what this coastal corridor, or what, whatever the area is that we choose to apply this, um, ordinance, once we reach some type of agreement here. And I know in the past, this board was not able to reach any kind of a decision. Um, I was not on this board, but I, I did observe the proceedings and I know there was a lot of work done on it and it seemed as though there was a one-size-fits-all approach. And we have modified that to some extent, but it's still kind of a one-size-fits-most. And I think we may need to consider some particular areas within, depending on, I, I am, I'm still uncertain where this line is going to be drawn. But even within that area, there are very different types of neighborhoods and communities within, especially if you go up to the, the, um, intercoastal. And this is something that it, it's a little unusual to me in this community. I've been here about nine and a half years, um, that there is no, no real true zoning here. And in most areas that, at least in my experience, is the zoning will allow you to have some variances, and I don't mean variance in the term that we've discussed here, but some variation, I guess I should say, within what the restrictions are and allowances are within a community. Because as we all know, a, a place like Highland View is a very different place than some of the areas on the Cape and they may have different needs. So I think that we need to be very cautious with trying to blanket one ordinance over the whole area. If we had zoning areas, we could look at them, we could tweak the areas for what was best for those communities. I think this is a very difficult ordinance to work through. I think there are concerns on both sides of the issue and I think that that is something that we need to consider. Being that we don't have any zoning, it's not something that's going to be easy to put into place, but I think that it is something we need to look at. And one of my concerns is if this line is at the intercoastal, how does this affect and impact White City and Overstreet? I've had quite a few calls about those areas. So, um, I'm just putting that out there in the process that these are things that we need to look at.
Sure, okay. You know, I, I put it a lot more eloquently than I could have put it, but there, there are different areas. I have Oak Grove that's very different than Cape San Blas. Where we've had most of the problems has been in the Saint Joe Beach and the Cape San Blas area. So I think, uh, from some further discussions, discussion on, do we need to exempt certain parts of this ordinance for Highland View area and the Oak Grove area or other areas that we, depending on where we actually choose this line at the end of the day? So I think going forward, that's something that all of us need to think about and to say, do we need to exempt, uh, certain areas, uh, from part of this ordinance? I still think that, uh, I still think that probably one per lot, uh, as the, as the law has been in, in Gulf County for a long time, although we haven't actively enforced it, is probably appropriate. Uh, what we're talking about here will, will not affect what's already on the books for Weewahatchka or any, or, or anything north of the, uh, uh, at least, uh, the intercoastal warway. So I, I think that needs further discussion because we are a very different community.
And it may not be, I'm, I'm sorry, we're, we're, um, it may not be just you're, you're in or you're out, but there may be some shades of gray here where some protections need to be provided for various areas, but some should be more stringent than others. And I, it's going to take some work, but I do think that this is an important enough issue that we need to put that work into it. And I'm more than willing to work with the attorney or whoever is working on this and, and hear from the community, but it's something the board tried to do and was not able to do in the past and it continues to be an issue, so I think we, we do need to handle it. But I, I think that we need to look at the gray areas as well.
Yes.
I think you find on the lines that we, in the graphic and the picture there, that defines the vulnerability areas to structures, uh, what kind of impacts you have during a storm or, or during events. I would not want the public to misunderstand that if you're on the other side of that line, that you are not vulnerable. The wind degradation for Gulf County is very little. If you have a fast-moving storm, uh, you may see only ten miles loss between here and Weewahatchka, the coast. So if you're in RV even up there in the Dow Keith area, I think you're still just as vulnerable to damage. It's, it's just, I just don't want the public to think past that line that there's not, there's no, uh, risk. Uh, and don't get lulled, that if there's a storm coming in and you're anywhere in Gulf County, that RV actually needs to be, to be moved out. And as George alluded to, that, uh, when you have a mobile home within that fifteen-hundred feet, uh, especially built, has special tie-downs to try to withstand that wind loading. And whereas an RV is just strictly relying on a stabilizer, so that's the reason for the emphasis to move and, and get it out of harm's way. So just, uh, I was hoping that was clarification that, you know, it's, um, um, those lines mostly for primary structures, but you can equate to the potential damage to any other thing that's not properly built or tied down.
On the RV ordinance, back to the public. When the public wants to get anything, we have two over here, the young man, or you can all, they'll get you too.
Hi, my name is Greg Scherich, I'm at ninety-two, twenty-five Olive Avenue. I was my lovely wife up here earlier. I just wanted to, uh, uh, bring up one point regarding the grandfather clauses. I believe Paul was his name that spoke about his, his children and stuff like that. I mean, our kids have been down here on several occasions. Now, we moved down here going on five years from Minnesota and we love it here and we're residents here. But, uh, our kids come down here, we'd like to be able to pass it on to them. I think we'll lose that with this grandfather clause from the way I, I believe it's written now. Um, would we be wise to put them on the title before this bill gets passed? So that we know that they'll at least have first grabs at the property? And where does this, uh, where does this property go after, you know, if they decide not to do it? I mean, nobody's going to pick up the property then if, if they're not going to be able to grandfather in, you know, other than putting up a structure or something like that? So there's concerns along those lines on, uh, you know, where does this property go after, you know, we move on, I guess is my, my question to you folks.
Thank you, Greg.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for being here today. Appreciate your time and energy, I'm Doug Smith, ninety-three, seventeen, Olive Avenue. Uh, I'm going to come at this in a completely different way, uh, because when I bought my lot, it was contracted as an RV lot. It was permitted as an RV lot. And now you're telling me I'm not going to be able to sell it as an RV lot, which is automatically going to cut the value of my lot in half. I'm in Beacon Hill, uh, there's one house, excuse me, one house being built in the entire area and that's within one block of ninety-eight. Uh, you go into Saint Joe's Beach, it's a similar situation. Been a couple of RVs come in the last year, but no building. Uh, and you go through that and then, you know, who's going to be coming here to fill these lots in? I mean, I don't know how long Beacon Hill's been around, I've been told since nineteen sixty. There are more lots vacant than the RV lots, you know, it's, 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 it just hasn't built out. Um, so from that perspective, and, and then, you know, and then, I'm really offended by the, uh, the, the whereas, the uncontrolled placement and use of recreational vehicles throughout the county and the coastal corridor. This, you know, causes sprawl and blight upon the entire county, which affects the general health, natural beauty, public safety, smart growth and welfare and the well-being of the residents. I don't understand how that plays in, you know, because it was permitted, it is restricted, you know, and I don't see RVs as a blight to the county. I, I, I consider it a source of income, people come down. I'm a full-time RVer. Now, I am not a resident of Florida. I was checking on it, uh, when I bought this lot earlier this year, I was told that all this stuff was settled two years ago, okay? That's the only reason I bought the lot, or I kept moving. I would have not, not have stayed and set up my lot for an RV. Uh, so in that instance, uh, I have not become a resident because of this condition. And I don't want to have to come before the planning commission every year or the new commissioners and waste your time to be grandfathered in again and again and again. Uh, I, I think it's a complete waste of county time and energy. Uh, and I also look at these things from a perspective that rather than RVs just being a hazard, okay? What about the boats and trailers? What about the abandoned storage trailers, the utility trailers? Not to mention the abandoned automobiles, you know? We were saying we're all coming from this from a fear factor, you know? Most of the RV owners are going to be responsible. And, uh, Attorney Novak, uh, asked me last time in front of the planning commission, what would I like to have eliminated? Well, the, the whole, the whole thing, really. I, I, because I think you're coming at us as, and trying to dictate that we're two separate groups of people, you know? Now, we live different lifestyles, I'm a full-time RVer, have been nine years and three months. In fact, when the weather got cold, I drove four hours this morning to get back up here to talk to y'all because I do believe this is important. I believe this still is America, you know, and this fear factor.
Hold it, Doug.
I'm telling you, I'm dead, okay? Thank you for listening and I'll be back again to get my three minutes.
All right, all right. Hey, let me ask you a question. I'll sit up here and do a lot of notes, right? Then go back and research it, dawg. I hear you say just drop the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
I, I thought I heard that.
Yes, sir.
I wrote it now.
Yes, sir, I mean, I don't know where you're protecting anybody from anything, you know? Uh, now, I checked with, I checked with George in the building department about building a pole barn that I could later enclose and he, he gave me instructions on what had to be done differently. Now, I thought about that, but then, again, I'm looking at the value of the property, you know? If I'm going to build that house and there's no demand already, why am I going to put more money in that hole?
All right, we got you that.
Well, there's one more thing. Does anyone buy, does anyone want to buy an RV lot? I've got one for sale. You know?
I think we got some realtors in here, you may want to, uh.
There you go, no, I've already got this, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I've listed myself.
Okay, Doug, thank you. All right, uh, anyone else? We got, uh, one, two, three, uh, whatever, just stand up, come on. There you go, there you go. Yeah?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dawn Lonsberry, that's right, Dawn Lonsberry, ninety-eight-five Cape San Blas Road. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, thanks, I think it's very important that we have this ordinance, um, which is from the other side. But I think, Commissioner Bryan has a great idea that it maybe should be put into different areas or somehow try to fit it for the areas that best need it. And I think the Cape and the coastal or the, what we call the tourist corridor, is what needs it extremely strongly right now. And maybe a little clarification from Mr. Novak. Um, with the way it's set up now, or with the ordinance, the way you have it written, can you buy a lot and, and come and go with your RV if you're not a resident? I'm not sure how that, how is it? If you're not a, you know, if you're not a resident of Florida, if you just buy a lot now, can you?
Under the ordinance?
Under the ordinance, yes, sir.
If you were C-word of whatever line, not.
Okay.
If you were landward of the line, you would.
Okay, all right, um, that answers that question. But what we have to consider and the counties consider, especially in the coastal corridor, is our dollars and cents, is because how much money is generated in our coastal corridor for the TDC, who we support hugely? And we bring about sixty-nine percent of the tax dollars in from that area and we have RV lots that people have bought next to nine-hundred-thousand-dollar homes. And I talked with a appraiser last week, I met with an appraiser on a property out in Cape San Blas and he said, "This is affecting our valuations," um, which affects our tax, tax dollars. And so that comes right down to the money we have to spend here and on our beaches for our beach restoration and for our fire department and for everybody else. And so it's a, there is a valuation issue, I think, especially in the, in the tourist community, in the tourist quarter as we have it out there now. And as well as the safety concerns with our, in the high-wind areas, I completely agree with that. And I just think we need to look at everybody's needs, I know, but I think it maybe needs to be separated out a little bit, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Speaker, um, I, I note, Mr. Smith, I don't know if he left for good, but he, Mr. Smith did participate in a bunch of those public hearings. Um, I just wanted to touch on one thing and he, he has actively participated and offered comment to the PDRB. Um, we changed the whereas clause on that uncontrolled or the sprawl and the blight. Um, and we changed it a couple of times after Doug came up and offered comment, trying to get it to where it would not offend some senses. And, and what I wanted just to mention was, it, it, it speaks to uncontrolled use and uncontrolled placement. It doesn't speak to RVs in Gulf County, it's just unregulated, uncontrolled and, and the placement of them. So we changed it up a couple of times so that that blight or that sprawl speaks to is with regards to the use, placement, and if it's unregulated. So we certainly don't mean by that clause to offend anyone that takes care of a recreational vehicle within this corridor. And, and I know Doug, he walked out, but he worked with us a couple of times and offered suggestions and we've worked it a couple of times and we can continue to do that.
Good deal, thank you, okay?
Good morning, I'm Jennifer Corbin. I currently live at ninety-one oh-six Olive Avenue, a hotbed of activity. Um, but I, I just wanted to share with you that, you know, I'm building a house on Highway ninety-eight and there's a house that just completed construction on Highway ninety-eight and there's a house under construction up on Auger and I think that's the one that he was referring to. But behind my new construction are multiple cottages that are being built. So our section of South Gulf County is alive with activity. It's not bad by any stretch of the imagination. But I was concerned, um, I, I fully appreciate, you know, his pain where he feels that his RV lot is not worth what it was worth when he began to develop it. I have a stick home, guess what? My stick home is not worth what it was before the camper compound of five campers went in right next door to me. You know, I had my choice. Do I want to look at the grill of an RV or do I want to spend two thousand dollars to put up a fence so it's not in my living room window? So, you know, having to blend, you know, these different lifestyles within the immediate community is a huge challenge. I am all for this ordinance because I think it does cap some of the explosion of RVs that we've had in our immediate area. Um, I shared with the planning board that I did canvas my immediate, um, area from Auger back to, back to Tulip and from, um, the park back to Trident. And within that, of the developed lots, twenty percent either had an RV, an RV with a shed or an RV with a pole barn. Now, you look at it from a taxpayer perspective and for every house or RV that we bring into, into the community, there's, you know, people that we have to support, we use county dollars to support it. And when you look at the tax revenue that's coming from these, you know, your, your RV lots are at the very, um, uh, low end of that spectrum. I think a pole barn currently goes for, you know, an eleven-thousand-dollar value, where you've got your stick home people that are, are bearing the greatest burden for that tax. So I think capping where we are, you know, with RV development is just a, a thoughtful approach to how do we continue to meet budget? Everybody that's visiting Gulf County, living in Gulf County, is putting a demand on Gulf County resources. And obviously this year we had a huge budget shortfall that needed to be closed with the tax increase. We're just looking to say, let's be thoughtful about how are we generating revenue? Let's make sure that we got some, you know, decent, moderate or high-end revenue to keep us afloat. So, thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer. I am, okay. All right, Chair.
How's it going, guys? Dave Gani, six forty-three Dalton Street. I've got a piece of property out in Highland View that I actually rent to RV people. Uh, some of it's contained, some of it's not. They, they have to be contained, some of it's not. I should be able to put on the property what I want. I mean, I just don't see how you guys can say, "Hey, you can have an RV here, you can have an RV there." I've got nine lots. It's three hundred and sixty foot long, a hundred and thirty foot deep. And I'll be able to put nine pieces of property, no matter what it is, on that piece of property if I want. And that's just, I'm here just to tell you that I don't think it's right.
David, are you a permitted RV?
No, but I'm, I want to do it, but if you guys, wasn't it ten thousand dollars per piece for septic tank or for sewer?
That's a city. That's a city.
Yeah. Well, I actually was grandfathered in to have a sewer system put on that piece of property and I paid the money upfront, which was five hundred dollars at that time. And they sent my check back to me and said that that wasn't a developed dwelling and it was, it had a legal power pole and it had a septic tank on it. And the, the house that was on it had just got moved whenever they'd done the sewer. But it was a legal, legalized piece of property at the time to have a sewer tap put on it and they would not do it.
I, I think this is, this particular issue is an issue that quite a few people in Highland View have experienced with city.
But, but my, the people that rent from me, I mean, it's, it's the only place they got to go. They keep the place clean. I don't have an issue and I, you know, I just don't think it's right for somebody to walk up and say, "Hey, you can't have more than one piece of..."
Would you, let me see that.
Uh, dwelling on that, on a, on a piece of property, it's three hundred and sixty foot long, a hundred and thirty foot deep.
David, I've had a couple of constituents have got one of these letters too. And in talking with the building department, is George still in here?
Yeah.
And Michael? I think all, all, all the things are kind of frozen until the board decides, you know, what kind of ordinance we're going to have and what intention we're going to have and going for.
Why should I tell these people that rent from me that is actually living there?
Are there, is there, is it one on each lot? Is it one RV on each lot?
Yeah, I got three RVs sitting there and I got, they're divided lots right there. I got nine lots on that piece of property. And one of the RVs is my personal RV, it's just sitting on the end. It ain't being lived in.
So, you got one per lot?
Mm-hmm.
Nine lots, you occupy three of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Three RVs.
Right.
But when this meeting is over, if you can't get George on that, and he might, can...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is for David. I don't know what the violation is. Under the LDRs, you're allowed to have one per parcel. And if it's in the county's jurisdiction, that's permissible. So, I don't know what the notice from the code enforcement has, if it's something else, but I can certainly talk to David afterward and talk to George and try to help him. But you're allowed to have one per parcel as it's currently written for the last three years. That hasn't changed and it doesn't change under this ordinance.
All right. Someone back here, then we'll get one over here next. Come on, sir.
My name is Cole Mayo and I have property at ninety-one thirty-two Olive Avenue. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity.
Thanks, sir. You have a full...
Yes, sir. I just want to take an issue that the previous lady spoke earlier and to correct a few things that was said. There's not five RVs on there. I own three lots. I take very much pride in my property. I probably have as much money in my RV and those three lots as that person has in their home. I keep it very well maintained. I do not put over the allotted number of units. The issue, I think, a lot of times is when people move into an area that are aware of what is in that area, then they're going to change that situation, then they need to think about where they buy. I hope that y'all do look at this issue. Most of the time, I've seen several issues saying, "Safety, safety." We all RVers normally would have enough common sense. If we have a problem, if there's a storm coming, then we're going to take them away. There is several places in that area that, and it's not RVs mostly, that are dilapidated, that needs issues to be cleaned up. But I do, and am along with a lot of the RVers, we spend quite a bit of money every weekend that we come down here, enjoying the property and the things that we're able to do. I do hope y'all look at this very, very long and hard. I'm not sure, one of the issues was showing that if you own a home, you're able to have that RV and leave it in your yard all year long. So, that would be a problem. I would say if you allow them to keep theirs in their yard all year long and some of these other ones that, that would need to be moved. So, that may be something I want to look at. But I appreciate your time. I just want to correct the issue and I do take pride in my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, a new resident right here. Thomas with George.
Ted Elliott, this is ninety-four forty-four Auger Avenue. I spoke to a couple of y'all already. My biggest question is, I bought my lot with intention to use it for an RV because I've been coming down here all my life for a couple of years and then build a stick-built house. We can't all afford to build a half-million-dollar house at one time. Use and occupancy to Mr. Novak. Lot of us probably in this room come down for the weekends. Where, how's that covered? We're not here four or five days out of the week, but we're here every weekend or every other weekend.
Good question. Right now, if, if we adopted this ordinance, you wouldn't be able to do that. Correct. In that quarter.
And we bought the property under the understanding we would. And far as the homes, the lady was just speaking about, you know, I don't totally agree with that. When, I don't know when she bought that property or when she built that house, but did she not check RV ordinances before she built that house?
That's right.
Why punish the RVers? Because the property owners didn't investigate before they bought. Correct? So, the RVers are getting punished because of what's probably happening at the Cape. They don't like the RVs there. The grandfather clause is thrown in there because Gulf County eventually wants to get rid of all RVs. It wants the smoke clears. Correct? Not correct?
I, I think that's valid.
I made some feelings on that.
Sure. I, I think that's a valid concern that what's brought this over the years is, has been the fact that you've had multiple RVs put on lots, which was against the ordinance and we didn't enforce the ordinance. But it, it's got to the point to where if somebody does come in and, and puts a lot of RVs on a, on a, a lot. And it's got to, to the point that we've had to address some of these issues on Cape San Blas. It's, it's, we've had some that's worked out of commercial, out of, out of these RVs. And, and we have to start this ordinance. We appreciate the public hearing, that's what we're here for, to hear all your public comments. At the end of the day, we do need to, in my opinion, adopt something to at least regulate the RVs as we regulate home construction, as we regulate mobile homes and as we regulate other things. So, that's what we're here to do.
So, to answer the question on the ordinance right now, when I put my RV on this lot and I go home for three days, four days, five days, I couldn't do that.
I can, I can take, I can take a, as you just explained, is absolutely correct.
Okay.
So, then the question for the commission and, and for the RV owner is the enforcement versus the, the language in the ordinance. You talked about it during the leave no trace, which is, does the county have the ability to enforce the ordinance as it's written? The, when I speak to the last four years, what you have in front of you is, for lack of better words, is taking all the sensibilities and all the various property interests into consideration. What you have in front of you also provides a function for every existing property owner in Gulf County that currently owns a piece of property to come before this county and have an outlet or a safeguard, a release valve, if you will, to have a RV on that piece of property going forward. So, the language exists after four years in this ordinance. The alternative would be to simply say, "There is a zone and from a day forward, there is no further conveyance of property to be used for RV ordinance." You can take out eight pages of your ordinance if you approach it from that, if you own property and you're in the corridor and you currently own. That would take out all the balancing of various property rights, if you will, RV versus single-family dwelling. What you have in front of you is provides a function to deal with all your current property owner's interests and deal with them. You have a select group of property owners in Gulf County right now that have a RV interest. This gives you an ability to address each one of them. Yes, it will take time and it will be a function of the county administratively and review in this commission, but you will address each one, you can provide those hardships. The alternative, like I said, is you can just put one sentence in, which is you create a corridor and you can say from this day forward, "It not to be used on a future owner, but current owners could." And what you have in front of you is eight pages of creating an ability for this county to address each individual property owner's rights. So, it's, and that's two different approaches to this issue.
Sure.
Yeah, let me ask you a question here.
Go ahead.
I may with board. What I'm seeing, I'm putting myself over in your shoes. Came down to Gulf County here, you purchased a lot. And I'm just thinking, you're going to put a septic tank on it? I don't think they have sewer out there yet. You're going to put a septic tank, you're going to tap into the local water supply, probably pull you a slab, possibly. I'm just saying this. And you want to bring, I don't know if you've got a big motorhome, a fifth wheeler, I don't know. But you park it, you spend the week with us and then you want to go back to Thomasville for a week? You want to know, "Can I leave my vehicle? Can I leave my RV there?"
Right.
"If I go back two weeks, can I leave it there? If a hurricane or if we get noticed, I'll come get it." Is that primarily what's...
That's common sense.
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
And I'm betting on another...
A lot hate to know I had to...
You don't want to invest in this.
You say come back if, uh...
If you blow it away.
I go forty-eight hour and I can fly back one minute and that's...
Right. I'm, I'm two hours away from there. And there's probably a lot of us in that same situation. We spend our money in this county, we pay our taxes in this county, just like the next man does. And, but the county is trying to say, "We're going to tell you when you can come and when you can leave." Basics.
Okay, well, Ted, that's...
But I think that, my last thought here is the one per lot, that's kind, that makes sense. You already got it on the books, just nobody ever enforced it. If you did the one per lot and if you want to permit it so everybody knows who owns it, sure. That would probably solve sixty percent of these problems with those two comments. But not telling the property owner when they can come, when they can go. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ted. The prior ordinance before you commissioners addressed both of those, which was, you could leave it in the tourist quarter, but you had an evacuation period first and foremost. And it did not tell people when they could come and go. And the county turned that down, went back before your planning board for eight meetings and now you've come up with this variation. So, the prior one provided that they could come and go. There was an evacuation period, there was a timeline and there was an enforcement and permitting application through the county. So, that was the prior approach from the county that was turned down.
Yes, sure.
So, Mr. Novak, under that prior language, that would be that you were grandfathered in, but you could come and go and you would just lose your grandfather when the lot transferred?
There was no grandfathering in, but there were evacuation and use language. And I, I can't generalize it, but if we could go back and we can...
That's fine, thank you.
Offer you that. It's also public record, so the folks can look at that as well.
Anyone else? All right, I'm trying to, I don't want to use anyone, but we'll get to repeating over and over. Come on up, I'll see this young lady and Doc Hardman, I will.
I like the young part.
There you go, everybody young.
Jennifer Palmer, I'm a property owner in Highland View and I also own a house at St. Joe Beach. Sorry, I'm having a little breathing problem here. But I would like to support what everyone who's spoken from Highland View has, has said. I own a couple modest houses in Highland View. One has been for sale. I've had realtors tell me, "Don't, don't, if you, if you support these RVs, it will, it depress the value of your house and houses." And to me, it's the opposite. If you don't allow RV people to purchase in that particular area, you're going to ensure that it remains...
I'm at Highland View now.
Yes, you're going to ensure that it's, it's going to remain a blighted area. In fact, I think, I sold five of these lots to RV people. They're substantial people. They come with incomes and jobs, they keep their... My cousin who lives in Atlanta, who works for CNN, he has a little RV here, he doesn't get down much, but he pays someone to keep it mowed every month. It's just a tiny little modest thing. And where you look in the area at some of the absentee homeowners of these houses, they're indeplorable, they're, they're blighted. It's not the RV people. I think our only hope for Highland View to increase land values and use, I mean, it has, it, there's such a negative attitude about Highland View being blighted, but there are people that want to move there, who enjoy the, the fishing and the, the, what do you call it, the little vehicles thing and the boating. And they've been coming for years. And, and this is a way for them to get a stake, take a stake. Also, the size of the lots in, in Highland View are very varied and in some, the only way you can use them would be probably for an, for an RV. So, for someone to come in and buy a lot in there, come up with eight to ten thousand dollars to put the sewer and, and water. And by the way, I had a similar problem with the, with the water, which I've talked to Ms. Bryan about with another lot of mine with the city. I mean, that's exorbitant. So, and then you're going to expect them to come in and, and where there's, in an area where, where it's, it's mixed use, but to me, that's okay. It's kind of like, people like it because it's a little laid back. You can have a fire, a campfire, you can have chickens, I guess, if you want to. But it's, it's, you know, people in Highland View don't like, they don't want to be a part of the city because they like the freedom of it. And the people that are buying RVs, they're, they're making an investment, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars just to get started. Now, some of them may, like my cousin, when he retires, if he doesn't get laid off from CNN, because I guess they're downsizing, he would like to build a little cottage down here. So, what's wrong with that? I, I think there's a little hint of like classism or something here in, in some of the tone of this, because I think this county can, it's, it's a recreational county. People come here, why can't they bring RVs? It's not wrong. Now, cleaning up some of it, that's okay, but these, these are not, this is not the people that have spoken here or the people that are buying in there. So, that's it. That's my opinion as a homeowner.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Pat Hardman. Hey. Want to have another thing on? Got a lot of input here. What this is all about? Try to get some here. Yes, and then...
Thank you, Pat Hardman, President Coastal Community Association. A couple of things. From, from the standpoint of the safety issue, the wind blowing issue, I don't think we need to go all the way back to the, to the inland waterway. I think we need to talk about that mile back, which is the, the structural areas. The other thing is, this is a safety issue and, and again, a balance was trying to be struck here to allow both grandfathering and for people who have already invested to be able to do, but also stop, quite honestly, some more brought, brought in. This county can't haul off RVs that are left down here when the storm comes in. And if we don't have some way to control that or know where that, who that RV owner is, we've got some major problems, particularly in our beach coastal area, beach area, out on the Cape, out on Indian Pass, what have you. Now, then, you can tell me you'll come get your RV, but I will tell you, if I live in Tennessee or Atlanta, I'm not likely to head into a storm to pull my RV... I'm not likely to head into a storm to pull my RV out. I'm just gonna say that it's insured and the hell with the people that live next to me. Now, people that you've heard today, that's, that's, that would be an exception for them. They would, they live in these things, they're moving them. So there needs to be some way that we can address both sides of this. I like the idea of the zoning area. Um, that makes a lot of sense to come in where there are areas. And, but again, you've gotta say somewhere along the line, you've gotta say, you just can't leave this baby down here and head out without having some way to have some penalties or something or cost when the county has to go in and start trying to move or secure. The other is you, you're, you're acting like you're making an except, you, you're making the exception for the RV owner in this, in this community that you're not making for any other type of residence or any other type of building. I cannot have a building built like your RV is in the coastal area. So you're making an exception for a vehicle to be used as a residence that doesn't pay taxes against the person who's having, I'm having to pay extra money, my clients have to pay extra money to build a certain way in this same area. So you've got to have some balance there. You can say you're hurting the RV person by not letting them have an RV. They're lying, but I will tell you, if you're living on that cave and somebody puts an RV next to you, your property values are diminished. Ask any acquirer. So what's your responsibility to the person that owns the property that's paying the taxes and building by the codes and making everything better? This is an attempt to get a balance. If you add the zoning piece into that, I think you've got a good balance here. And you're not getting a proliferation. And because we are a county without an RV ordinance, then we are getting influx of, for once, coming from down, uh, everywhere else into here. But there's gotta have some rules. We come back, you can't have the influx, you can't have the volume increase without having some rules to play by. So please, just consider it, balance it. But we need an ordinance in place to have some rules in play for safety and for property values in certain areas. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? I think we've pretty much covered this RV, uh, or next place. Uh, at this time, we're gonna take about a five, maybe a ten-minute break. We've still got a lot of business before the board today, so we're gonna...
Okay, uh, we're ready to go. Let's see if we can move along here. It's about right. If we've got everything cleared up, no motions, oh, we had purpose on it, now let's go back over here to you. Goodbye, see you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I gave you a copy of an email I received from Commissioner Bryan. We're getting to talk about this one. I got another one I wanna talk about, and...
You have a, you say you have another one?
I have another one that I have to give you a copy of yet. But reason I gave you a copy of it, same thing that happened several months ago. Commissioner Bryan has put something in an email that's incorrect, it's untrue, and it doesn't matter with me except when it's about me. And it does matter with me then. And, um, and she sent me an email most of the time, not all the time, but most time. It doesn't matter when she sends emails to me, but most time it's Sunday nights, seven-thirty at the clock, midnight. And Sunday night sent me an email, and one, I think it was about four, one's come in, three contained, directed to me, and I made a copy of a couple of them. And what I'm gonna do is put it up on you. I had this conversation, we had similar conversation before, and I told you that, you know, I was prepared to go as deep as we need to go or as shallow as we need to go. At the point in time, the board was okay with Commissioner Bryan, and I was sitting down there talking. A month later or longer than that, she did come to my office. We talked about everything, but what we need to talk about. And now we're going down the road again, and I gotta, she has accused me of doing something here that's incorrect. And I, I need to get it clear. Now, one, what I told Commissioner Bryan in my office, I have no intention, never, ever responding to her emails when they contain inaccurate assumptions, innuendos, comments about me. And I'm not gonna ratify and justify and make her emails what they correct by asking a question at the end of the email. So, public doesn't like to hear this. I don't like to do this. But the only way I can handle this is put it up on the board, and I won't say it publicly. I have no intention of ever answering anyone's email. Commissioner Bryan's only been doing it when you send me an email with incorrect information and accusation and accusing me of things. I'm gonna read this December seventh, two thousand fourteen email. It's at the bottom of that page. Then I read the one that came to me Sunday night. Sunday, December seventh, eight-thirty-four PM. Jeremy and Don, please send me a copy of a deed transfer entitled to Beacon Hill Veteran Memorial Park from the Bureau of Land Management to Gulf County. Have you done any research on whether we have a duty to inform BLM or the variance being considered by the BLOCC which affects the park property? Question mark. And does the county have a duty to maintain the integrity of the park and boundary and protect the natural vegetation on the park's dunes, which would most certainly be damaged by the contemplated construction on the adjoining parcel? Question mark. If a structure is allowed to be built six inches from the property line, the contractor will have to be on county property while completing the construction from start to finish. What impact would this have on park property and a potential liability to the county? Further, I have raised the issue of accretion in past meetings. Now, I mean, I can't remember everything. But the, further I have raised the issue of accretion in the past meetings. As you know, the park property accretes at the same rate as the adjoining park does. It does not appear that you are taking any steps to protect and preserve the property rights of Gulf County relative to Beacon Hill Park arising from the accretion of land on that parcel. In fact, under Jeremy's legal counsel and Don's advice, the BLOCC accepted a conveyance of real property from Ellis Smith, which I believe contained either wholly or in part land which already rightfully belonged to the county through the process of accretion. Let me remind you, your duties are to the citizens of Gulf County as a whole. Your actions to date and all aspects of the Ellis Smith proposed variance matter do not reflect that position. The mistress... I don't think I've ever said a word about Ellis Smith variance. I haven't had a part of it. I haven't even been here to some of the meetings when that subject were to come up. And the commissioner has a history of putting untrue things in emails. And, and it's, you can't change what's done. You can't change history. And, um, and this one, she's accusing me of doing something wrong. She's accusing me, I haven't advised you anything concerning Ellis Smith. But she's accusing me of advising you that you need to accept that piece of land, and, and it already belongs to Gulf County. She incentivizes it's already Gulf County's. This is one. And I don't know what kind of discussion could I have here to do with this. My main point is, I don't wanna let this, this lay, and a month later, I get another... Uh, she, she sent me an email and said, it's the third time I sent it to you, maybe the third time is the charm. I told her in my office I would not be sending any more reply to any of her emails when she makes untrue accusations. I have no intention of doing it, of doing it. So my main focus thing today is, I'm telling the board, that's what I'm doing, and then I'm not worried about it anymore. Now, what I want to do to Mr. Bryan, each and every email you have, I want to answer each and every email you have, but I don't wanna get slammed, I don't read her keys, I don't want some untrue statements maybe about me in the emails like you did during the year last year, and this one, and the next one. And, and I don't like it. I can't help what you do. But what I am saying is, don't expect to reply. You can send me another one, say this is the fourth time or fifth time, I will not be replying to this type of email. I want to reply to every email that every county commissioner has, but you can't, you can't accuse me of doing something wrong. And then, and then you make some other assumptions and throw in some innuendos in there that people are doing things wrong. So, and I got one more email I'll give you. Mr. Chairman, on that, on the first email, I asked David to load on that computer a load of a map of Beacon Hill Park and, and the properties around Beacon Hill Park for clarity. I think there's a lot of people included, and that possibly a commissioner that doesn't understand what is being done around Beacon Hill Park. And specifically, when you get down to the potential conveyance of that piece of property from someone to Gulf County. There you go. Thank you, bro. Oh, this is the, uh... This is Beacon Hill Park. Um, Gulf County acquired this, uh, through a, a grant by the federal government. The Department of Interior of Bureau of Land Management gave it to Gulf County for recreational purposes. You see all the thirty-nine point nine-three acres of what we developed, we, this is, um, the, uh, ball fields. The piece, that piece I'm, what Commissioner Bryan is referring to in, in her email is this piece of land here. This thirty-nine point nine-three acres of land is pretty much rectangle. Like some encroaches over here, don't understand all that, but it is what it is. But here, we have a definite legal description for that piece of land. And Commissioner Bryan's email is saying, through accretion, that she implies is if this piece of land is getting bigger. And if this piece of land is getting bigger, I would love for her to draw it out what she thinks the shape of that piece of land is if, if we were to accrete another half mile. But, but here is the point, uh, this is sixty-five feet from me high water. Approximately sixty-five feet from this point of our property to me high water. This private property owner here, his piece of land, that goes to me high water, and it follows this east-west section line. This piece of property here, his legal description goes to me high water. And it butts, his legal description says it butts this line here, this east-west property line. So as this beach in the next fifty years gets bigger, if it were to get bigger, then this, this gentleman's beachfront property has to get narrower, and this gentleman's beachfront property gets wider. So, so there's, there's comment in the email about, um, the, the work we've done and, and determine about the accretion and, and, and protecting Gulf County. I don't, I don't really understand how this piece of property can grow at all. If, if we were to accrete another mile out, our piece of property still has thirty-nine point nine-three acres. But David, the next screen is my main one I wanna show. And I think, Mr. Chairman, this is, the next screen is, most people haven't seen it. And you hear, you hear, you can't really visualize what's being done. Right, this is, this is zoomed in. This is a piece of property that is, um, south of Beacon Hill Park property. This is a parcel, and that's the property line right there. And it goes back up and, and that gentleman's got a house on the high... Yeah, there's two pieces. And, and these two pieces, legal description goes to me high water. I would just not. The, um, from, just doing some rough, from, from this point, from that point to me high water, about sixty-five feet. From where you get off this boardwalk and walk, if you were to walk straight here, you're talking about a hundred fifty feet to me high water. And, and what, what I'm looking at is the next screen, David, showing the, the piece of land that Commissioner misses in the email. Nothing to do with Don. Don has never talked about the piece of land, nothing to do with me itself. I got included in the email about this piece of land. Here's, I, I guess that's the quarter acre. And my understanding, my recollection, two or three months ago, that's about a hundred and eight feet long of, of Gulf front. Um, if that's a hundred and eight, um, the distance. And, and I roughly looked at, this is about sixty-five, you were to go straight out to the Gulf here from that point. And this laps, if this is sixty-five, this is probably a hundred feet of property line here. That, that if you were to come off the boardwalk, you come out on this and go to the beach. If this were continuing to accrete, this piece of land continues to get wider on the beach because it follows, it follows that east-west section line. Because Beacon Hill Park is made up east-west, north-south, and it's all four sides is that way. So I'm not sure everyone has seen this piece of property that was, you know, whether it's donated to Gulf County or not donated to Gulf County. And two, um, if I go back to the email, it doesn't matter with me itself, the email. Go back to the email, this piece of property has nothing to do with, uh, Bureau of Land Management, has nothing to do with that. If Gulf County were to acquire all of this land, and all of this land, we don't have to ask the Bureau of Land Management permission or anything. This has nothing to do with, and two, to, to make mention in the email that I may not be doing my job because I haven't made contact with BLM about possible acquisition of this land. But David, that's all I need, and the chairman's all on that one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to keep those up. I, I'd like to address the issue of accretion. What we're looking at here is, is a more current picture. This beach accretes. We're very fortunate that the beach at, at Sancho Beach accretes. And years ago, there wasn't that much beach there because it's accreted. Under this state law, when land along a water body accretes, to determine who owns the accreting land, you do not extend the landward lines of the property. And that, if you did, you'd end up with something like this, which is what we're seeing. Now, I don't know what the legal descriptions say on the adjoining land. Anyone can have a legal description drawn. It's, and all it does is describe a certain piece of property. It doesn't mean that they own that property. But when this land accretes, you do not just continue on the landward landlines to determine who owns the accreting land. So that park land would also accrete as its neighboring lands would accrete. And that is something that, over the years, we're looking at a picture, current picture, but over the years, that is something that is the responsibility of the county to maintain that accreting land for the people of this county. And that was the point of my email regarding accretion. Now, the point of my email regarding if the BLM will allow someone on their land to construct a home is because if you're constructing a home within six inches of the property line, it goes without saying that the, the contractor would have to be on the Bureau of Land Management land, which is abutting the land where they're building. Now, it's clear to me by looking at the correspondence when they had to do the access road for the landlocked parcel, um, through the park, that the Bureau of Land Management has great concern with any use of that park that is not related to recreation or history. And in fact, allowing a contractor to go on BLM land that has been given to the county, but they can take it back, is a problem. Also, that is park property, the dunes, the, all the natural vegetation there would be, um, disturbed. So I believe that as county commissioner in District Three, it is my responsibility to ask these questions. And these were questions that were asked. I can't, I can't seem to find any delicate way to be able to get information from the county administrator. And I will continue to ask the questions that need to be... And I will continue to ask the questions that need to be asked for not only the people in my district, but in this county. And I've done it by email. I've been asked by the administrator not to bring things up in public. Now I've been asked not to put things in writing. I spent three hours with the county administrator after this last go-around of an issue with my emails, and I, I would say almost the entire three hours were spent with me listening to Mr. Butler tell me that I'm a liar. Well, I am permitted to put my opinion into these emails. No, sir. I'm permitted to put my opinion into my emails, and I will continue to do that. And I have, I have written, I believe, I've asked questions, I do the best I can to soften my questions to Mr. Butler. Now, I, I keep hearing that it's an issue for me to send emails at seven o'clock on Sunday night. I'm working at seven o'clock at Sunday night, and that's when I do send emails. Now, I, I did miss the special meeting on December 18th that this board held. I viewed the meeting, and everybody on this board was singing the praises of our attorney because he sends emails at all hours of the night. I appreciate that. I know what it's like to be an attorney and to work all hours of the night. But I, I don't understand why that's okay for some folks to send emails at odd hours, but not others. I've told you repeatedly that when I send an email, I don't expect you to respond if it's not during your work hours. If it is during your work hours, I only expect you to respond when your schedule permits. But I'm going to email when it's convenient for me. When you read your emails, you read them when they're convenient for you.
And throw them in the trash, Mr. Butler, when you get them, because I'm tired of hearing all this. This is constantly...
I understand, I understand. The board doesn't want to hear it, the public doesn't want to hear it.
Commissioner, you had to flow these. Okay, okay.
But I preface what I said, I preface what I said is, I don't care when you send emails. If you'll go back and listen to the tape of today's meeting, I said that. I'm not, I'm not chastising you for when. I don't care when you send emails. The main focus of what I'm trying to say today is, you can, you continue to accuse me of doing something wrong, you will never get a reply from me. And so what I don't want to do is wake up two or three months down the road, and you come in and say, "Butler won't reply to me." Well, I'm telling everybody, I'm not going to reply to you. Now, I will reply 100% to you for decent emails when you're not accusing me of doing something wrong. You have accused me of rec... When did Dawn give you advice?
I didn't say you gave me advice. Because you won't respond to me. I said you gave this board advice.
Let me read it again. I understand, maybe you didn't understand what I said. Now, let me read it again. If you can't understand it, I'll get someone else to read it to you. In fact, under, in fact, yeah, under Jeremy's legal counsel and Dawn's advice...
For this board.
I would try to keep conversations G-rated, but when you tell me, "In fact, under Jeremy's legal counsel and Dawn's advice," I haven't advised you anything on this, on this issue.
You didn't say to me. I was talking about the action of this board.
You said Dawn, you spelled D-O-N apostrophe S. As far as I know, that's me, because you addressed, you addressed this to me.
Mr. Butler, I said, "Under Jeremy's and your advice to this board."
I didn't advise this board.
You regularly advise this, but you're the county administrator. These are issues that you deal with. It's your job to deal with these issues.
Commissioner, you're doing, you're doing what you do best. You're spinning the story. I have not advised you of anything. You sent me an email, and you're accusing me of recommending to you, this board, uh, the acceptance of the conveyance of land, and I have never talked with any of you about this. I don't care, one way or the other. I, I don't care. But what I do care about, and, and two, let me go back to some of what you said. You said, "I spent a long period of time telling you as a liar." I never used that word.
Pardon?
I have never used that word with you.
Oh, you know, I can get my notes.
You are, this was true. I tell you, all this was true.
I can get my notes. You spent almost three hours finding, I mean, ways that I can't even imagine, many, many different ways.
And I could spend a lot more time than that.
Tell me that I spin, that I lie, that... You know what you said, Mr. Butler? You said that I cannot tell the truth, that it is, it is impossible for me to tell the truth, and that I, I don't even know how to tell the truth.
Commissioner, I don't understand it.
And I sat and let you vent to me for three hours, and I tried to talk to you, and I asked you in that meeting for an example. I said, "Give me an example of what you're talking about," and you could not give me one example.
Now you're spinning the story, because I told you everything, the, the issues with, with the, uh, Fox River Park, the issue with Beacon Hill Park, I gave you those examples, and you don't want to talk about it. You don't want to talk about it.
That's true.
And Commissioner, I don't think you can help it. I don't, don't know that I want to blame you or not, because I don't think you can help from, from spinning stories and telling inaccurate information. Mr. Chairman, next email?
Let's, let's move on now, we're getting, all right, come on.
This one came in, Sunny, 7:44. And again, I don't care when you send them, that's when it came in. Dawn, I have sent a low email to you twice, and you have had almost a month and a half to respond. Email below, and I'll read, I'll read it. "I've heard the third time's the charm. Is there a reason you're not responding to me? Or did, or if you did respond, and I missed it, will you please resend your response?" Email dated November 30th, Sunday at 7:31 PM. Dawn, "I read the November 27, 2014 edition of the Star, where Tuan Kapinski announced in the EDC November meeting that that would be, that this would be her last meeting as EDC director. Further, the Star reported that she announced that county officials," I'm guessing that means you, "are searching for a new full-time EDC director, and that this new director will likely be in place by the January meeting of the EDC. If this information is accurate, it is distressing to me that I had to learn about this major personnel change by reading it in a local paper. Have you apprised any of my fellow commissioners with any details concerning this matter? If so, when? Additionally, what steps have you taken, or do you plan to take, to fill the position by the January EDC meeting, or have you already made a decision on the replacement? Finally, what does this mean in terms of Mr. Kapinski's employment, if any, would the counties would go forward? If the Star has misreported, please provide me with accurate information in addition to your response to the above question."
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Like, I told you several times, now, at this point, I'm, I'm not saying I'm proud to say this. I haven't bought nor read a Star in probably five or six years now, and, and, and so I'm not, basically, on the email, I'm not going out and buy one to read it, see if what, if you have misrepresented what they said, or they misrepresented what Tuan said, and I'd have to go back to the minutes of that EDC meeting, because I was not at the meeting when Tuan made the call.
Just to your point, I was asking for clarification. I was telling you what my understanding was, and I was prefacing it with saying...
You're not a people person, you don't know how to talk to people.
I was prefacing it with saying, "Maybe my information is incorrect. But if it is correct, could you please provide me with the correct information?"
Bottom line is...
See, this is all because I have to be very soft with you.
Hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, one thing. Commissioner Bryan, I've got a book to go by, and you guys get to write the book. And, and you, you decided, this board decided to get into the EDC business. Dawn didn't decide, this board decided to get into the EDC business. It's just another thing for me to do. So, once you decide that, we, we have, from that point forward, a few days after then, we had to try to figure out what to do. We have had an interim director from that point until now, and hopefully soon will have a director. But you're acting like you're the, well, you said you were distressed to read in the local paper that we were doing this. This board voted on this, this board determined to do this, and you act like, "That's just something Dawn coming up with. I'm doing what this board said to do." And, and, and that's the part, that's, I really think you really need to think what you put in writing, and what you say. If you quit talking and quit putting names right, then you'd be okay, because you get them all wrong. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Butler, if, if Ms. Kapinski was strictly the interim director, which I had heard she was interim, and I heard she was not the interim, but if she was strictly the interim director, why would we use taxpayer dollars to send her for training if she was only the interim director while we were looking for a new director? But clearly, my email was asking for information, and you are the county administrator, so I ask you for information. This was a simple email that you could have clarified. I laid out to you that the information I received was from the local paper. So I prefaced it with saying, "Maybe it's incorrect. But if it is incorrect, could you please provide me with the proper information?" I don't know how to make it any nicer for you. You've made it clear from the start that you don't like me, that happened during the election, during the campaign.
There you go again, Mr. Chairman.
And that is, I'm, I'm going to finish my statement too, Mr. Butler. I have tried to work with you, and you are the county administrator, I am the county commissioner, and we need to be able to work together.
I agree.
And I will continue to ask questions of you, and I expect a response. Now, there's nothing that says you can't respond to me and say, "I believe what you're saying here is incorrect." But I'm asking you for information. I, I can't seem to please you, and it's okay. We don't have to be friends, but you do need to function as the county administrator for the county commissioner of District Three as well.
Let me, Chair, let me say something here. Speak myself. This gentleman over here, I live 20 something miles, this room where I'm sitting. One to two to three times a week, I'm down here. I'm over in that office, I'm over in the courthouse, I'm walking around, and I talk, I communicate. If I have any questions, I can call. I call Mr. Butler and tell him I'm coming down, I'll be here, I'll walk in, and they'll say, "Commissioner here is in there with Mr. Butler." Well, then I'll drift over and go over and talk with Dennis till he leaves because of a conflict. But I know the commissioners come out here and talk. Commissioner Bryan, I'm not singling you out from God's sake. But do you ever just come out and sit down and shoot a bull with them? That's the old saying, you know, just come in, "Lynn, how you doing? Did you have a good weekend or anything? Do you ever, do you come out once a week, once a month, or do you tell me?" I don't know, because I can't, you and I can't be sitting there and talking.
That's right. Um, when I was first elected to this board, I did. I came and I sat with Mr. Butler. I talked with Ms. Lanier. I don't, I don't have an issue with Ms. Lanier. But I ha, I have come and talked with Mr. Butler, but it's difficult. I've sat with him for two to three hours, which he has chastised me for. I try to give him the time to speak about what he wants to speak about, and then on the back end of that, I'm chastised for it. Listen, this is a business, and the county administrator and I do not have to be friends. I'm sure he has enough friends. I have plenty of friends. We don't have to be friends, but we have to be able to work together. And I'm perfectly happy keeping it a professional relationship that we work together. I'm not asking for any, anything beyond that. But it, it has been clear that he does not want to work with me, and I'm, I'm not really welcome to sit. Now, last time I was there was three hours, and like I said, it was three, almost the entire three-hour period was of, of Mr. Butler telling me that I, I don't know how to speak the truth. It was shocking to me, but I let him vent, and then I thought maybe we would get somewhere after the vent. It didn't get anywhere. Now, I, I say that, the employees, there are employees to this county that they suffer repercussions for speaking to me, and I'm not going to get into that, because the last thing I would ever want is for one of the county employees to have ramifications for speaking to me. But that is what's going on in this county, and that has gone on since day one when I was elected. And actually, before I was elected, during my campaign, it was clear that there are a few individuals that do not want me on this board. Well, I am on this board, and I'm going to do the best that I can do under this, under these circumstances. But what's going on with our county administration and how the employees are treated when they try to do their jobs is wrong.
The Commissioner's recollection of our conversation is twisted.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Butler? Share if you have anything. Mr. Quinn?
Just one, one quick thing. I had spoken with, uh, DAX representative, uh, Department of Agriculture about Indian Lagoon and the reshelling of Indian Lagoon. They're going to do what they can to see if they can't get us in something that, same thing that, that, uh, Viking County is doing with the bay. So I've made that contact, and hopefully we'll get to move forward there. Just one other thing. I've also spoken with FDOT. I said I was going to look for a lot of different sources of revenue for the, for the, uh, nourishment project. In, in that section, it wouldn't be necessarily just for nourishment, it'd be for road protection. And the secretary told me that he could probably find some monies, uh, to go with what monies that we can put together, uh, for that particular project, but we don't call it nourishment, we call it road protection. So if the board would allow, I'd like to write a, get the staff to write a letter to, to DOT requesting that they participate in funding for road protection at, at the stump hole area. If the board doesn't mind, I'll, I'll proceed with that, uh, to help get some funding. And other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Butler, will you take care of that? And the chair has nothing. Now we'll go to the public. Anyone in the public have anything? Anyone in the public?
Very disturbed. My name is Tommy Mays, 86 on the Ohio West Highway 98, Port St. Joe.
Tommy Mays.
Mays, M-A-Y-E-S, yes, sir.
All right.
Been a property owner in Gulf County since 1995, a resident here since 2003. And I would just like to say, very disturbed by the exchange I just heard. I think there's a better way to go about this than to do it in front of the public, and I blame most of that on you, Mr. Butler, just from what I've heard. But it doesn't matter. It just, I don't think that kind of thing should be played out in this forum, for what that's worth. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Kristy McIlroy, Port St. Joe, 1311 Woodward Avenue. I certainly don't want to add any gasoline to an already explosive situation, but I have seen, because I've been sitting here for four years, and in the last two years, certain employees pinpointed and people trying to put them in a box that isn't healthy, and they have to defend themselves. I don't like seeing it. I think it's counterproductive, but then when I see a citizen come up and say something is wrong because an administrator is being kind of put into a box, I've also dealt with this administrator in a chair position, and I've always felt like I was respected and maybe not always agreed with, but allowed my say, and the same thing with staff. So I just don't understand why we're coming into another year in this crescendo of, uh, unproductive conversation is still going forth. Everybody that knows me knows that I can be pretty high spirited myself, but I'm able to work within a system and value people's expertise and, and try to build on everybody's perspective instead of just kind of, you know, drinking my own bathwater. So that's all I'm going to say, and... know, drinking my own bathwater. So that's all I'm going to say, and appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else not motion to adjourn?
Go away, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Thank you.